All right, I'm going to call to order the December 7, 2020 City Commission Meeting to Order. We're going to begin with a roll call. Mayor Mike Fournier here from lovely Royal Oak, Michigan. Commissioner Douglas?
Here.
Commissioner Prush?
Here.
Commissioner Macy?
Here from Swain County, North Carolina.
Commissioner Colo?
Here.
Alrighty, so we got everybody here. Commissioner Dubac, we're still waiting on, but he can join when he can log in. So this brings us to number three on our agenda tonight, which is to adjourn to closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged information. Is there a motion to do so? Motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. We have to roll call vote. Commissioner Colo? Commissioner Colo? Commissioner Colo?
You're muted, Brandon.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, well adjourn to closed session, resume the meeting at 7:30. Mr. Schwanger, just let us know when we've gone into actual closed session. Thank you.
Mayor Fournier, members of the City Commission, it looks like we are once again live. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Schwanger. Alright, we're resuming our meeting. We've adjourned from closed session. And you know what we'll do? We'll just do another quick roll call, just so before we commence, or before we start the next part of our meeting. Mayor Mike Fournier, Commissioner Douglas?
Here.
Commissioner Prush?
Here.
Commissioner Macy?
Here.
Commissioner Colo?
Here.
Commissioner Dubac?
I am here.
Alright, all the crews here. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Dubac, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Dubac?
Thank you, Mayor. So as we gather this evening to address the business of our community and begin to wind down what has been a very challenging year in many, many ways, let's start us off by focusing on a few of the positive things, you know, we have to be grateful for, or these things that I'm grateful for. And, you know, grateful for the opportunity to serve my friends and our neighbors as a voice on this commission, and grateful for the faith they put in me and all of us at the table. Grateful for the ability to engage in thoughtful, informed, respectful discussion and debate when necessary, at a time where there's far too little civility in our discussion and disagreement. I'm grateful for upgrades to our parks and for innovative library services and for tremendous public safety, for all the awesome staff that work every day to make these things possible. I'm grateful to be part of a community with so many kind and amazing people in it, especially during such a difficult time. And I'm grateful for all those kind, amazing, passionate people who work to make Royal Oak even better by dedicating their time, by volunteering, and by serving in our boards and committees, and stepping up to run for public office like all of us have. And I'm very proud to serve with you all, and particularly folks like Commissioner Pat Prush, who celebrated a milestone birthday this week, who has over the years dedicated an immeasurable amount of time and energy into very valuable skills in the city. So thank you, Pat, and very happy birthday. So as we, as we consider the decisions for us this evening, as always, you know, you have to be mindful of the impact our decisions have, not just on residents now and on all of us, but on our children. You know, Royal Oak will always be their hometown, and for future residents who aren't yet born, let's aspire to leave a city in their hands, which they're as grateful to live in as we are today.
Thank you, Commissioner Dubac. Very nice words. And we're grateful for you too, Commissioner Dubac.
No, thank you.
Alright, so now's the time for the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can. Commissioner Dubac?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Dubac. Alright, well, we have a very important guest with us tonight to give us a legislative update, Senator Mallory McMorrow. Welcome.
Thank you, everybody. Really good to see everybody, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission. Glad to see you all virtually, everybody looking well. Wanted to provide an update on a few things this evening. Number one, the state's response to COVID-19. The governor and the Department of Health and Human Services announced a 12-day extension today of the temporary pause. Again, this pause is much more targeted than the stay-home orders that we saw in the spring, and it directly addresses some of the highest-risk areas for spread, which is really anywhere where you are in an enclosed environment where there is limited air circulation and you are unable to wear a mask. So that's indoor dining, movie theaters, and what we've seen so far, and there was a report from many of the hospital leaders today, is that the effects of the past three weeks are working, and that's good, but we are still not at a point yet in terms of the trajectory of that trend, where the Health Department feels safe in opening things back up and letting people get back to kind of those close-contact issues. And one of the things that I thought was important, I posted on Facebook today, to put that in local context. So in Oakland County, our diagnostic test positivity rating is still above 16%. It's 16.87% right now, which is very high. So even looking at some of the other plans for reopening, the House GOP plan, for example, listed starting to lift mitigation efforts anytime we're below a 5% positivity rate. So we still have a ways to go. There are a number of hospitals throughout the state that are at 100% capacity, many are at above 90%. So we've got to find the balance between making sure that we're okay economically, and people can live their lives, and that we're not overwhelming our health system. So asking everybody to stay home, limit trips, wear a mask. But I think the good thing is that there are a number of relief programs that are currently available for any of our particularly small businesses, restaurants, who are impacted by these mitigation efforts. I don't want to downplay the effect of that. My sister works in a restaurant, she currently has COVID, she is out of work for two weeks and not receiving an income. So we know how devastating this is to a lot of people. So there's two programs that I want to highlight. One through the MEDC, applications will open beginning December 15th for any of the small businesses affected by these mitigation efforts to apply these or grants that will be available to people. And Oakland County recently announced $10 million as well, specifically targeted at restaurants, and those funds are available. You can find links to those on our Facebook page if anybody's interested. But as always, if there are residents who need assistance, I would recommend going to the Oakland County website. There are a number of grants and programs available to help people, or they can always reach out to our office, and we're happy to connect people with any of the resources or grants that are out there. I know this is a really hard time, and there's promising vaccines on the way, so we just need to get through the next few months and on to the other side. I don't know about all of you, but being seven months pregnant, I'm very excited to get on the other side of this, and just want to thank everybody in our community who's taken this seriously. And I know that this has just been a year none of us will forget, even though we may want to. Alright, moving into another issue that I know is important for the community is the Open Meetings Act. So Paul has been working with us, our office hosted a meeting with all of our communities to get some feedback on what communities wanted to see with the Open Meetings Act, not only in terms of the response to COVID, the temporary allowance for virtual meetings, but also in the long term. So wanted to provide an update there. Right now, as we know, we're all meeting virtually, the Open Meetings Act allows now, during the COVID-19 pandemic, for public bodies such as city commissions, school boards to meet virtually. That was set to expire at the end of this year, it still is set to expire at the end of this year. Our understanding at this moment, although we haven't voted on it yet, is that there is an agreement between the bill sponsor and MML that that will be extended through March 31st. We hope to see that on the floor this week. My fingers are crossed, I will be happy to support it and vote for it when it comes up. I will be very frank, and Paul knows this from our meeting, I would like to have seen that either extended longer through June, which is meant when many of our automakers are planning to physically come back to work, and our major employers, but everything is a negotiation and we'll take what we can get. But my hope is that in the new term, this opens the door that we can have broader conversations about amending the Open Meetings Act, because I think one of the plus sides of virtual meetings is that it has allowed many more people to participate in our public meetings, who may not be able to come out physically to a meeting, might not be able to get childcare. You know, it's much easier to log on to a computer and check in on what your local government is doing than necessarily come and sit with us as much as everybody would love to for a few hours. So I'm hopeful for that conversation, and I want to thank Paul for being such a valuable part of that conversation, and it is one that is ongoing. Finally, before I open it up for questions, I just want to put in a plug for my office's virtual coffee hours. It is something we now do every single week that the Senate is in session. So between that and some virtual town halls, I think we've had more than 78 virtual events since the start of COVID-19. We have them every Friday, and they're really great. We had more than 900 people log into a virtual coffee hour recently, and we now livestream them on Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, and LinkedIn. So you can log in from any of those platforms, ask questions, it brings them all to one place, and we're able to answer them. And getting into the new year, I'm going to bring on some special guests for that. So if anybody wants to check those out, you can visit the website, senatorsmcmorrow.com, or search my name on Facebook, and join us there. It's a great way to check in, and usually my mom is there, and she lives in Pennsylvania. So if you want to say hi to my mom, you can check in with her weekly. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Senator McMorrow. Pretty thorough update on a number of topics. Very gratefully, you took time out of your busy schedule to come here tonight. I know you've been working really hard, you've had a lot on your plate, you've been representing Royal Oak extremely well with dedication, and we're grateful for that. So we'll open it up to any questions. Anyone have any questions for Senator McMorrow? Commissioner Prush?
I have to be sure to unmute. Senator McMorrow, we know that there are legislators, when you go into session, who aren't wearing masks, and that terrifies me, and I know it terrifies an awful lot of people. What do you guys do personally to protect yourselves? And are there, there probably aren't any more things that we can do to assist you in that regard besides keep yelling at them for doing stupid things. But do you feel confident that you guys can operate in a way to protect yourself? Because we're really, really worried about you up there.
Yeah, Pat, thank you for the question. This has been frustrating is an understatement. I think that when you look at the Michigan Capitol, we are asking a lot of people to take a lot of sacrifices, and just do common sense things to be able to protect each other from a virus. We're asking everybody to wear a mask when you're in public, outside of your own household, and that's really hard to send that message when half the people that I work with don't practice that in person. We had an instance in the Senate where one of my colleagues that I serve in two committees with had taken a COVID-19 test, was waiting to get the results back, came to work anyway, served in two committees with me. So we were, you know, kind of facing each other for a number of hours, and then found out that she tested positive. There's no requirement that legislators report their COVID-19 tests, and we've been getting positive test notifications just about every week. I have been pushing since April for the legislature to adopt a contingency plan, because if it does get to a place where there is a very broad outbreak that prevents us from physically being there, and just as a reminder, we lost a member of the House of Representatives early on in this pandemic who passed away from COVID-19. There are no plans now. We don't allow for remote voting, we don't allow for virtual meetings. So I would say if there's anything to do, I would say putting in a letter of support for that. I have a Senate resolution that would allow for that. There's an equivalent House bill as well. We saw this week when Rudy Giuliani came for the Election Oversight Committee, he has since tested positive for COVID-19, and that was a four-and-a-half-hour committee hearing, where dozens of people in that room were also not wearing masks. So I fully anticipate that there will be another outbreak, and I wish I had better news. I want to show up kind of in a full hazmat suit sometimes, but you know, I'm committed to being there and doing my job, because that's what I was elected to do, and we don't have any other options at this point.
Commissioner Macy?
My question's a little more boring. You mentioned taking a look at OMA generally, not outside of just this extension for the virtual meetings. Can you talk more about what things are under consideration?
For sure, yeah. So I would like to see, just kind of at the high level, I would love to see government evolve to where much of our private sector is, which is allowing for virtual meetings, allowing for hybrid meetings, to increase participation. There was concern from some of our colleagues when we were even considering Senate Bill 1108, which turned into the Public Act that allowed for virtual meetings through the end of the year, that, for example, people could be drinking when they're on meetings, that somebody could be outside my door right now with a gun threatening me to vote a certain way, that somebody could be going through a McDonald's drive-through. There are a lot of stories about what could happen in these sorts of meetings, which in my mind, isn't a reason to oppose it, but it is potentially a reason to put some guidelines and guardrails around, how do we do this in a way where we can trust what's happening in the process and also encourage participation? So it's still largely around virtual meetings, but I think there are some permanent changes we can make, just to frankly evolve how government works and is responsive to more people.
Commissioner Dubac?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Senator McMorrow, for joining us and for the update. If there's a way to say this quickly, you know, in the run-up to the last budget cycle, given the impact the pandemics had on the economy, you know, we were looking at potentially a $3 billion budget deficit. As a city, we had to prepare for that. We were doing some belt-tightening and making sure that, you know, we would be able to withstand any cut to revenue sharing, or anything else that happened to the budget. Just wondering now, that we're looking, going into another budget year in a budget conversation, what is the outlook from Lansing? Are you feeling like we're not going to get that kind of last-minute rush of cash that saved the day? Does it all depend on what happens in Washington? What's that looking like, and how can we best prepare?
Yeah, I think the short answer is yes and yes. I think a lot of it depends on what comes out of Washington. We were restricted in CARES Act dollars, which, you know, expire at the end of the year. So between Oakland County and the state, we've been able to do some pretty creative things to, we couldn't backfill budget holes, but so long as we were able to justify that they were COVID-19-related expenses, we've been able to do a lot with the CARES Act funding. But if that's not used by the end of the year, that gets returned effectively. So I'm encouraged, hopefully, that there's some breakthrough in Washington for extended relief. But also, our economic outlook significantly improved between August and when we had kind of that first projection at the beginning of COVID-19. So we were looking at, you know, a $6.2 billion loss over two years, and that was cut drastically. And that was largely on the back of Michigan's ability to control the spread of COVID. Early on, we brought that curve way down, and we were near the top of the country in terms of economic recovery to, I believe it was 87% of economic levels that we saw before COVID. That may have changed now. So, you know, as we're into this third wave, and hopefully when we come out of the other side of it, we can really get this thing back to where we were, kind of in the summer, we were in a good place. But we hosted another meeting with, Paul was on that one as well, I believe, with the Senate Fiscal Agency to really talk about projections, and I think that was really valuable. So if that's something that was valuable, we're happy to do that again, and bring, you know, the Senate Fiscal Agency directly to you guys to ask these questions and help plan for the budget moving forward.
That might actually be really interesting. Thank you.
They did a good job of making very wonky budget things interesting and had a lot of charts, and you know, I learned stuff too. So we're happy to kind of do these mini-meetings and workshops if they're helpful to any of you.
Right. Well, thank you for all the work you're doing representing our community in Lansing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Colo?
I'll be pretty quick here. I just want to thank you, once again, for being here tonight. You've answered a lot of great questions too from other commissioners, so I will ask another one. I just want to do another plug for your virtual coffee hours, because I jump in on them from time to time, and they're super informative. So if anyone's watching right now, definitely visit these coffee hours. It's a great way to connect, not at like 7:00, 8:00 o'clock in the morning, at an actual coffee shop, if you can't make that. It's a, they're a really cool thing. So thank you for doing those. They're, you know, very informative.
Awesome, yeah, please join. We are looking, I think this week, we're going to try for Friday at noon. I've got a couple of scheduling conflicts, but typically, they're every Friday at 1:00 PM on weeks that the Senate is in session.
Great. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There aren't any gravel mines in Royal Oak, but there is legislation afoot in Lansing that would affect how they are allowed and permitted. And what's important is that the proposed bill would undermine local authority in these matters, and I'm very grateful for Senator McMorrow, who's already indicated that she would oppose that bill and protect the rights of local communities to control what happens physically in their communities. The Michigan Municipal League has also introduced a community stabilization plan. One of the elements, Senator already referred to as extension of the Open Meetings Act, meetings capabilities. One of them is about cities that have income taxes, which is not really relevant to us, but there's also a portion of that that would hopefully roll back some of the onerous provisions of the Headley Act that keep us, keep cities from recovering from depressions. Could you speak to that just briefly, Senator?
Sure, yeah. That was something that we actually brought up, actually before MML put out their recommendations and had their meeting. When we did have the meeting with all of our municipalities and the Senate Fiscal Agency, that was brought up by Berkeley and a number of other communities that said, this is a real issue for us. When we hit a recession and we're on the upswing, that that recovery takes much, much longer because of the issues with Headley that we currently have. So even before COVID hit, there was some bipartisan interest in finally taking a look at Headley, particularly how Headley and Prop A have intersected, and potentially bringing that roll-up back to where it was previously. That has since stalled out. I haven't heard anything about it potentially moving during lame duck, but it is something that I have been interested in. I know Senator Jeremy Moss, who serves on the local government caucus, has been kind of trying to spearhead as well. So my hope is if it doesn't come up during lame duck, which I haven't heard anything, that it will, that it's something that we tackle in the next term, because there is bipartisan interest in finally taking a look at that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Senator McMorrow, on that one. And, you know, for my two cents, for what it's worth, I think this will be an excellent recovery tool that won't necessarily have to allow municipalities to be completely dependent upon short-term funding from state and federal government. I mean, you know, if we got something done by July, you know, as we're coming out of this disaster, and we're looking for economic recovery and municipal stability, to me, I still think this is top of the list. And frankly speaking, I think most people in the community, we've all had experience. When you talk to them about Headley, they don't understand. They even call you a liar. Like, that can't be true. There's no way on earth that this could be like this. Yeah, I mean, everything you think of logically, it's, it works, sadly, it works this way. You know, we don't have a money tree we can shake from. In fact, you know, it gets cut down to a stump overnight, and then we gotta, you know, wait 20 years before we recover, which actually impairs a lot of folks, especially people that have lived in their homes, because we have to, you know, unfortunately, for public safety and other critical things, we got to put millages in place sometimes just to fund the basic needs of cities, and that's not good for anybody. So if you're, if you're still focused, I know you got a lot on your plate, but, you know, from this commission to you, coming into next year, next year's budget season in July and August and all that, it would be, I think, a great tool to help us, you know, get out of this mess once we get all the vaccines and everything back on track. So.
Absolutely, yeah. We'll look forward to scheduling a few more of those kind of community workshops that we've been doing, because I think they've been really valuable for me, just to hear directly from the ground what you need and what you're working on, so I can take that back with me. So we'll look forward to more of those. And if you have any suggestions for them, or the community does, or somebody reaches out and says, this is something that would be really great to learn about, or have, you know, individual workshops, or coffee hours, or guests on that we can bring on, let us know, and we're happy to do that.
Amazing. Alright, any other questions or comments for Senator McMorrow? Alright, well, we know you still have busy days and evenings ahead of you. Thank you again for taking time to bring us up to speed. Always very informative, and, you know, clearly, you've made the concerted effort to keep a lot of forums, the coffee hours, etc., to keep not just us, but, you know, every citizen updated on current topics going with the state, so we're very grateful for that.
Thanks, everybody. Stay safe. Have a good night.
You too. Take care.
Thank you.
Alright, this brings us to number eight, which is public comment. Ms. Schwanger?
Mayor Fournier, members of the City Commission, we had nine individuals comment, and I will play those for you right now.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger.
Hello, Royal City Commissioners. This is Mark Sackett from the Royal Oak Leprechaun Summer Collegiate Baseball Program. I wanted to share some great news with you. After pounding the pavement for many, many months, and dealing with setback after setback, and then with COVID, I have struck a deal. I have found a current Major League Baseball player who is from the area, does not play for the Tigers, who was part of my organization many years ago, who has agreed to fund the project. He will be injecting $350,000 into our organization that will go directly to the excavation turf and fencing for Royal Oak Memorial Park. This donation, on top of the $35,000 I have already put into the field, will make Royal Oak Memorial Park the premier municipality field in the state or in the Midwest. We hope to get excavation going early next week, and we will need 40-degree weather or warmer to install the turf. We expect this field to be ready to go in late March 2021, coming up. Everyone that I speak with agrees this is a great thing for the kids in Oakland County. It took a lot of persistence to find the one person that had the funds and shared my vision for this project. We got it done. My funding person, who is very quiet and humble, does not want his name on the field or recognized in any way. He only wants me to use his name to draw high-quality players to our Leprechaun team. We have already begun this process. The pandemic has challenged us all in many ways. It canceled our entire summer season last year, and really hurt in the raising of funds to make this project happen. I've had discussions with Mr. Fidelli regarding revisiting our joint operating agreement to adjust the dates. I am hoping city officials and the support of the city commissioners will be understanding of all the hard work that went into bringing this project to fruition. Now, with guaranteed funding, I would like to revisit our agreement and make some minor adjustments to help make this project sustainable and successful for 10 years and beyond. I will present my suggestions with Mr. Fidelli, and I hope all of you, I ask all of you to consider how many great things are happening in Royal Oak Memorial Park. Thank you.
Hi, this is Samantha Coe. I live at 125 East 13 Mile in Royal Oak. I'm calling in regards to the traffic Resolution 6B for the no outlet sign located at 529 Florence. I grew up at 529 Florence for 20 years, and the, there was never any traffic that enters the dead end accidentally. In addition to that, there is a sign located at the corner of Florence and Maple that has been there forever, in addition to the sign at the very end of the street. Just calling to support that I feel that this sign is redundant and just clutter, really, in the midst of other signs that are already there for the traffic. Thank you.
Janice Wagman. Contacting seniors requires a multifaceted approach, since many are either not on the internet or use it only for limited purposes. Insight Magazine and the Senior Newsletter are a good source of information, but they aren't timely like what is available on the internet. Parks and Rec is formulating a pamphlet containing resource information for seniors, but they are suggesting leaving them at specific locations for pickup. I strongly suggest using CARES funds to mail these pamphlets to seniors, along with providing a way for them to furnish their phone numbers if they wish to be notified of significant information in the future, either via text or robocall. The Oakland County landline database we used for robocalls was severely outdated and only reached a small percentage of Royal Oak seniors. We need to be able to reach more. I assure you, this is an acceptable use for CARES funds. Next, although I do not live in the area currently being considered for sidewalk repairs, I believe it should be postponed at least another year. Every branch of government and the media are asking for more stimulus funds and expressing many people and businesses are hurting. Using the status of tax payments is not a true indicator of homeowners' ability to pay, since mortgage companies will continue indicator of homeowners' ability to pay, since mortgage companies will continue to pay taxes. Speaking of the financial hardships of our residents and businesses, I hope you will invite Jim Ellison to explain his bill to change the resident-approved Headley Amendment. If passed, it will raise the property taxes of all Royal Oak property owners, as well as many, if not all, of the rest of the state. Lastly, in replacing the current city commission opening, I strongly encourage you to accept someone who is not a like-minded individual. What you have established with your last appointment, as well as your new, you need to have three people agree to put an item on the agenda policy, is an echo chamber. This prevents almost all counterpoint or diverse opinions, allowing you to make unchallenged decisions, such as spending over a quarter of a million of our tax dollars and hundreds of man-hours on a program which will not only not solve the problem, but is possibly illegal. Please choose outside your usual box of candidates. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Dornbusch McGee. My address is 4524 Elmhurst Avenue, Royal Oak. I am calling the City Commission meeting to comment on the Traffic Committee report, and specifically the agenda item about the removal of the pedestrian signalized crossing at Normandy Road and Durham Road. As I'm sure you are aware, the pedestrian signal was struck by a truck and then taken down, I believe without proper consideration from the city. I am a wife and a mother. I frequently walk my baby stroller and my dog in the area. Loss of the pedestrian signal and that signalized crossing is a substantial loss for pedestrians in the area. I have reviewed the study that was completed and the data that was examined by the Traffic Committee. I do think the study is incomplete. It was done on a poor-weather day, and not even a complete 24-hour period was utilized. A complete one day was not utilized. Data should have been looked at over more than one day. In addition, speed was not taken into consideration. As I understand that the traffic counts did not meet criteria for reinstating the signal. However, the study fails to take into account that there is a brand-new park, Normandy Oaks, that is being completed in the area, and that traffic volumes will likely increase after the pandemic and with the addition of the additional park. There is no other safe, signalized pedestrian crossing in that area where you can safely cross with a dog and a baby in a stroller. And I do think this poses a substantial risk for pedestrians. I am also a physician and a trauma surgeon, and I hate to see any safety measures removed that could potentially lead to more accidents in the area. And again, I do think the traffic volumes will increase with the addition of this brand-new park. So in summary, I think the data being used to guide this decision is incomplete, and the situation will change drastically as the new park is opened and traffic volumes increase. The signalized pedestrian crosswalk at Normandy Road and Durham should be reinstalled as a removal was never planned. This was an accident that happened. If the signalized pedestrian crosswalk cannot be reinstalled, I request consideration for a flashing pedestrian signal to help prevent accidents and to improve safety for pedestrians in the area. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Heather Rowe, and I'm calling in regards to the Traffic Committee Resolution 6B that involves the no-outlet sign at 529 Florence. I grew up actually at 525 Florence, and have lived there. I moved out in 2008, and had lived there for 20 years previous, over 20 years. And I just wanted to call and make a note that traffic there was never an issue, and I don't think a sign at 529 is necessary at all. Thank you so much. Bye.
Hi, my name's Jenny Harkin. I live at 602 Florence, the corner of Florence and Edgewood. And I'm calling regarding, I think it's 6B, regarding the sign that says no outlet. We have one at the corner of North Maple in Florence. There's one at the very end of the street that you can clearly see. I don't think we need the additional sign in front of my neighbor's house. An eyesore, very little traffic goes down our street. That's my comment. Thanks for listening. Bye.
Hello, this is Marie Miller, calling for Article Item 15 of the agenda of tonight. This is for Item 16, for the no-outlet sign on, for 529 Florence Avenue, Royal Oak. We do not need that sign. No traffic ever goes at the, it's a no-outlet. There's no need for that sign. Again, Marie Miller, 248-275-7039. Thank you.
Patrick McGee, 4524 Elmhurst Road, Royal Oak. I'm calling in regards to Item 15, Approval of November 2020 Traffic Committee. Item 6C, Removal of the Pedestrian Signal on Normandy Road and Durham Road. I would urge you and request that you postpone the vote on this. The loss of the pedestrian signal is a substantial loss for pedestrians in the area. The study completed and reviewed by the Traffic Committee was incomplete. Traffic volumes will likely increase post-pandemic, and with the addition of Normandy Oaks Park, I am concerned about the safety of pedestrians crossing Normandy Road, as there are, there's really no good alternative crossings. You can cross at, potentially at Normandy and Crooks Road. However, it is unlit, and walking north to south, or south to north, that crosswalk has no substantial lighting over it, and you are obscured by the traffic control box on the signal. Also, at the traffic meeting, I called in, and I would like City Commission to follow up with city staff on why there was no video posted of the Traffic Committee. And also, during the Traffic Committee, I was not allowed to see the other Traffic Committee members. How do we know that they were fully engaged in the comments that I was making, which were all factual based on the reports submitted by TIA? Also, the report submitted by TIA, I thought, was not very factual. It misrepresented a lot of data. It did not collect data for a full calendar day, nor did they collect speed data, which I find surprising, since Benjamin Road connected to Normandy Road has a speeding issue. Also, can alternatives be thought of and discussed at the meeting tonight? Can a, instead of a pedestrian signal, can a pedestrian sign be installed that lights up? Can a flashing vehicle speed sign be lit up, much like the one on Maple Road in Birmingham? Or can a stop-for-pedestrian sign be installed, like the one on Main Street in downtown? Also, does the report represent pedestrian volumes a true average? Why was no speed data collected during the requested traffic study? I urge you again, please ask these questions, and please postpone your vote until a thorough traffic study can be completed along Normandy Road. Thank you.
Hi, this is Liz Tierney. I live at 529 Florence. I'm calling on behalf of myself and my husband Mike in regard to Item 15 on the agenda, and the Traffic Committee's Resolution Item 6B regarding the no-outlet sign on Florence Avenue. We realize that the Traffic Committee agenda items typically are accepted into the record as a matter of function of the city commission, and that these items are not typically subject to additional scrutiny. We appreciate the actions of the city engineer and the Traffic Committee, but we feel that they have recommended wrongly in this case. And the street on which the sign has been placed is very quiet, and no outside traffic other than the residents and the occasional delivery vehicle, and the weekly garbage truck come onto the street. The street is marked at the entrance as a no-outlet road, and people do not try to use it as a through street. The dead end is clearly marked, and there is clear intersection for traffic to turn onto just prior to my home. The sign does not warn of an unknown condition. The condition is known and marked by the road end sign directly in front of a driver as they come down the road. The purpose of the no-outlet sign is to warn drivers of an unknown condition, and the sign is redundant in the information that it provides. This is an internal location within the road network. This is not the intent of the sign. The M dot regulation states that the no-outlet sign be placed at the entrance to a road network. This correctly placed sign is already at the corner of Maple and Florence Avenue. The state also, I'm sorry, the state regulations also state that the minimum distance for the sign is to be placed is 150 feet. This intersection is only 100 feet from the end. This small dead-end branch doesn't even meet the definition of a long enough road to have this sign in place. Lastly, my neighbor indicates that the sign keeps or reduces the amount of traffic that turns around in her driveway. This neighbor has only lived on the street for a year, and when she moved into the house and requested the sign, her house was new, and people may have been coming to the end to see what they had built. Her house is no longer the newest house in the neighborhood, and the interest has certainly waned over that time. In the 30 years in which we have lived here, the only traffic that we, that we have encountered was during the construction of the 525 house. Otherwise, this is on a very, very quiet street. If the city engineer who originally installed the sign had performed a traffic count, which should have been standard procedure, the data would have shown very little traffic on the dead-end section of Florence. Without this data, the neighbor can imply that the sign is working, when no sign would provide the same result. We asked the city to have the sign removed. It is not placed at the entrance to a road network. It is placed in an internal location. It is not acting as a warning device to an unknown condition. The condition is known. It is redundant to the signage that is already in place. Any driver that comes into this dead-end condition has driven to that point purposely, and the sign in front of my home will not stop that activity from occurring. Thank you.
Mayor Fungian, members of the City Commission, that concludes the public comment for this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Wanger. All right, that brings us to Item 9, which is the approval of the agenda. I'll ask Ms. Wanger, is Mr. Goddick on this evening?
He is not in the waiting room just yet, but he is going to be available for the meeting.
Okay.
He was, I think he was planning to come on about 8:30, judging by when we thought the Traffic Committee would come up on the agenda, knowing it would be a bit later.
Okay. I think we'll be able to get to it pretty soon. I know there was a request to move 15 up a little earlier in the agenda for the folks that called in tonight. So if he's gonna be on at 8:30, and the folks that called in and want to hear the resolution, or hear the, hear how we discuss it, if a commissioner is so inclined to move that up after the consent agenda, that was just a request that was received by me. So, but we're at the approval of the agenda. Want to make a motion? We have Commissioner Colo.
Mr. Mayor, before I make this motion, do you think it might be appropriate to do it after the legal license, since Mr. Goddick isn't quite here yet, to give him a little bit more time?
Yeah, we could do it. I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. So I move approval of the agenda with Item 15 moved to after Item 11.
Okay. All right. We motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubb. Discussion on the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Dubb?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
My vote, yes. Okay, we have an agenda. That brings us to Item 10, which is the consent agenda. Anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Commissioner Colo?
To please pull, receive and file Item I.
Anybody else? All right. So the consent agenda now consists of claims from November 23rd, December 1st, and December 4th, approval of purchase orders, contract modification to Contract Cap 2001, 2020 concrete replacement prepaid sidewalk improvements, approval of inter-local agreement to name designated assessor. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion on the consent agenda as presented. Okay, with none, I'll call for the vote. We'll go with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubb?
Yes.
My vote, yes. All right. All right, that brings us to the Fitch Affirmation of Royal Oak's AA Bond Rating. Commissioner Colo?
You know, this is quite an impressive advance.
Yes.
And kudos. Kudos to all the commissioners here who have worked through it to get this done. I think it supports a highlight what this, what this item actually says. So Mr. Brake, if you and Ms., Ms. Rudd might want to discuss this, I think that'd be a really good thing to explore.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Colo. I, I will defer to Director Rudd, that her and her staff work very diligently and hard to receive this designation, but it was truly a group effort, but we're very proud of this distinction. And I'll defer to Director Rudd to offer a few comments.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Fitch affirms the AA stable outlook. Standard and Poor's does give the city a double A plus during its last rating. This is a positive that we had the double A affirmed, and with a stable outlook is also advantageous. I will say, just to summarize the affirmation, the positive news and what the director, Matthew Wong, found to be positive is our fund balance. That really helps the city. Should we find ourselves getting outside of our policy range, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna see some changes in our, our ratings, some negative changes, unfortunately. So that is really the most positive. The negative is our, they call our restriction to raise the millage rates, because most of our millages are at their maximum authorized rate as of now. So they see that as a negative. We do discuss, though, when the most recent requests were on the ballot for the public safety, and the roads, the rate of passage was very high, but they really don't take that into consideration. So those are really the strengths and the weaknesses really of the city. In addition, the economic diversity with the various businesses in the city, rather than relying on, you know, like a Ford plant or something like that. That's also a big positive for the city. But in a nutshell, it's, it's our significant fund balance that really saved the day.
Thank you, Ms. Rudd, and thank you for the effort of you and your team and everybody. I mean, it takes a, takes a whole lot of people to, to make sure that we're making great financial decisions, and that we're, you know, being conservative with our fund balance and ensuring that we have a rainy day fund. It's not only good for sustaining our operations, it saves us some money in a way, and saves us, you know, and helps drive a better bond rating as well, which makes absolute sense. Thank you. Any, any questions for Ms. Rudd? All right. I'll just say, thank you, Ms. Rudd. Thank you, Mr. Colo, for, or Commissioner Colo, for, you know, pulling us off the consent agenda, so we could talk about it, and, you know, let our residents know that there is some good news out there, even in the midst of a terrible year. Hopefully, that will conclude soon here, that, you know, you know, we did get a good bond rating, so that's really good. Okay. All right. Now, we have to, maybe there's a motion to receive and file this item? Motion by Commissioner Dubb. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush. Any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the votes. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubb?
Yes.
Yes.
My vote yes as well. All right, give me a second here. This brings us back to our agenda and we are at number eleven, which is the Michigan Liquor License Commission Establishment Royal Oak Good Times Inc. DBA Diamonds and Pinkings, one hundred South Main Street. Quest to amend plan of operation, Chief O'Donohue.
Mayor, City Commission, we have received a request from Royal Oak Good Times, which does businesses Diamond Steakhouse and Seafood and Pinkies located at one hundred South Main to change your plan of operation, which includes changing the names, concepts, adjusting seating, hours of operation and a revised floor plan as part of an overall remodeling project. The applicants are also requesting an additional bar permit in the second floor outdoor service area. The applicant is requesting to change the layout of the first floor to accommodate two new concepts, Diamonds Bohemia and Pearls Deep Dive. Diamonds Bohemia will feature Mediterranean inspired cuisine while Pearls Deep Dive will feature seafood entrees. These two concept, concepts will be separated by a wall with individual entrances at the main street vestibule. The concept for Pinkies in the second floor will remain the same. The proposed interior seating for Diamonds is eighty-two seated patrons with twelve at the bar and Pearls Deep Dive is sixty-three seated patrons with nine at the bar. This request is twenty-seven less seats than Diamond Steakhouse currently has. The applicants are also requesting to expand the capacity outdoor service area to seat twenty patrons. The applicants are also requesting to increase the seating capacity for Pinkies. The current plan of operation indicates total seating of one hundred and twenty-eight patrons. This includes sixteen seats at the bar, fifty-six interior seats, eighty, fifty-eight seats in the seasonal outdoor service area. The applicant is requesting to amend the total capacity to one hundred and eighty-two, which includes fourteen seats at the bar, eighty-six interior dining seats and eighty-two outdoor seats. The applicants are also requesting an outdoor bar permit to be located in the seasonal outdoor service area with seating for four patrons. The applicants will also be reducing the number of fire pits in the second floor from four to two. Should be noted that prior capacity for this space was one hundred and seventy-eight seated patrons under Red Fox's plan of operation. Overall capacity, however, will be set by the police department after recommendations from both the building and fire departments. The applicants are requesting to amend the hours of operation for Diamonds Bohemia and Pearls Deep Dive from Monday through Friday from eleven AM to two AM and Saturday and Sunday from ten AM to two AM. Pinkies hours remain the same. Since the opening in twenty nineteen, the police department has responded to twenty calls for service for related to the sale of alcohol. The police department does not anticipate this request will cause any additional strain on police resources and does not object to the request. If approved, the applicants will have to comply with all building zoning, planning requirements and restrictions. And that is it, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner.
All right, thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief O'Donohue? All right, I see we have the petitioners here. I see Mr. Merkel and I think I saw Ms. Allen as well.
How are you? How's everyone?
Doing well, we're doing well, I mean, you know, the best we can, I know you guys all the other restaurants have been struggling a little bit, so our heart goes out to you, but maybe you want to tell us a little bit more about what's going on, what you want to do, maybe elaborate a little bit on what the chief had to say.
Yeah, thanks for having us tonight. It, the first floor, you know, in such a great corner at eleven and Main, you know, Diamonds worked really well for us and Howell, but, you know, after we opened Pinkies, we really kind of fine tuned what we realized that 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 the city kind of wanted and the, and the folks that were coming in with, you know, with Pinkies has worked very well for us. And it's such a large space in the first floor that we just thought, even before the pandemic, that maybe we should, you know, kind of versify a little bit and, and bring some more options, you know, to the Royal Oak dining scene. So that's kind of how we came up with the idea. There really isn't, you know, the, the things that we're planning on doing with the Bohemia concept and Pearls are very new to Royal Oak and, you know, we feel they'll make that corner really dynamic to have three great dining options all in one spot. So not the best timing to be opening new restaurants, but, you know, we, we kind of decided we were going to do it and here we go, we're just crossing our fingers and, and hoping it works, so. We feel good about it, though, obviously, when things get back to normal, so.
You guys have any questions for Mr. Merkel? Commissioner Macy.
Drop my microphone. I, I love the Pearl's play of diamond. I, I wondered if you have any other Pearl's deep dives or this is going to be the first location for that.
You said for Pearls?
Yeah.
No, Pearls is, is a similar play on the Silver Pig and Howell, which is actually connected onto the Diamonds and Howell. It's a separate concept and under the same roof, so a very similar, you know, vibe, I guess you could say. It's, it's kind of smaller and intimate, it's a little bit more refined. The Bohemia concept, the Mediterranean will be, you know, really authentic Mediterranean food, but in a fun hip concept. But Pearls will be, like I said, it'll be seafood, there'll be a separate bar in there to make it its own space. You know, separate entrance and everything, but this will technically be the first Pearls, but it'll be somewhat similar to some things that we've done, just more tailored for the area.
Which side is going to be the corner and which side is going to be the side with the bar?
So when you're coming off the corner, we're going to have a main vestibule that will lead you to both concepts. So you'll go right into the vestibule for Pearls and you go left for the Bohemia. So they'll, they'll both have their own separate doors, but they'll have walls all the way to the ceiling, so they'll be soundproofed so that each space can have their own, you know, atmosphere and whatnot. And then they'll, we'll utilize the, the very large kitchen that we have on the first floor to put out the food for both. So Pearls will be on the eleven mile side and Bohemia will be more on the main street side.
What's your timeline, hope for timeline?
We're moving along pretty quick on it, so I would say we'll probably be ready in the next forty-five days or so. It just really depends on, you know, whether it's, makes sense to open or if we can open. I mean, obviously with everything going on right now, it's really tough because all five of our restaurants throughout the different cities are, are closed, unfortunately. So, you know, it's a tough time, but we're, we're just trying to muscle through and, and hopefully we can open as soon as we can.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I have one more.
Oh, there it is.
The, it says there's an outdoor service area, is that going to be associated with one or both?
That'll be more on the Bohemia side. Yeah, Pearls will, will be just indoor. That'll be a long, that'll be a long main where the garage doors are currently.
Mr. Colo.
I'm asking this because I skipped dinner tonight and I'm just really fascinated by the food. Mediterranean happens to be my favorite style of food and dining. Can you explain that concept a little bit more, the type of, are you going for tapas style? Yeah, I just, I liked a little bit more about it because I think it's really exciting for this town.
Thank you, yeah, we, you know, as I started to figure out, you know, what's the best, you know, concepts for, for that space, we knew we wanted to go more on the healthier side of, you know, at least maybe half vegan and that type of thing. And the Mediterranean really is just a really, you know, awesome way to eat. You know, we're, we're cooking over real coal, you know, so we're, we're doing a lot of different skewers and things, but we're, we're making our own hummus, which takes three days to make, you know, if you do it really the authentic way. And a lot of different spreads and the salad team of more of the food from Israel and we're, so we're, we're really picking from different regions, you know, when it comes to Mediterranean, but it's really exciting because the food will be super authentic, but the atmosphere will be more to fit Royal Oak of something that's a little bit more hip, a little bit more urban, more fun, so you can really have the best of both worlds. So that's kind of what Bohemia is about, so it's, it's a Bohemian themed Mediterranean restaurant. So it's really something different that you haven't really seen, especially in Michigan. So we're really excited about that one.
Thank you. Then one more question, can you explain? I'd rather report, could you just explain where the patio is going to be or where you'd like your outdoor seating to be because I had a hard time visualizing that.
Sure, so on the main street side, the, the outdoor seating will be where Diamonds was. So we're just going to configure the seating a little bit different, but it'll be under the awnings that are currently there. And then there was the third awning and because of the five foot rule, I believe it was from making sure that there's a walkway for pedestrians going up Main Street, that third awning will only be like two two tops sticking out of the garage door area. So we'll have a, we'll have the ability to have a little bit more seating where we normally do with Diamonds currently, but the third garage door that's closer to the corner will have just like two tables of two, with more of a lounge area for people to enjoy, you know, there, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Merkel, thank, oh, Commissioner Colo.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Rudd.
Mr. Merkel, thank you for, for taking time to explain your, your change a little bit. They sound really great, you know, and, and we'll see where this body goes. Any other questions or any motions to be made? Commissioner Prush.
I'll move approval of this resolution granting these changes in operation.
Motion by Commissioner Prush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, any discussion? Mr. Douglas.
Yeah, just briefly, we have a number of restaurants, some restaurants in town that have always innovated to respond to market forces and to changes in public taste. And I just have a lot of respect for Mr. Merkel and his team for, you know, looking at what the market demand says and, and rebooting and restarting to bring great new ideas. I'm, I think it's great to have another seafood restaurant in town and I'm, I'm with Commissioner Colo on the Mediterranean, so bravo, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Commissioner Colo?
Um, so I just want to make the same comment I've made the last three meetings in a row now, like this is awesome. We have someone who's reinvesting back in Royal Oak. This is, yeah, again, another restaurateur who in the middle of a pandemic is making, you know, reinvent themselves and making Royal Oak a better place. You know, Mr. Merkel, thank you for sticking out with us. You have a large space, which I'm sure has quite a hefty rent on it every month. And you are re, not only are you making it through that, but you're also reinventing it and redesigning it. I'm sure it's a substantial capital improvement, so I'm excited for it and I thank you for continuing to, um, thank you for continuing to invest in us and I, I look forward to having maybe some Mediterranean food and a glass of rosé with Commissioner Douglas one day there.
Sounds great, thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, I'll just add, you know, your, your restaurants have always put out a quality product and, you know, you, you, you haven't gone wrong as far as at least everything that I've eaten and experienced. So you have a better pulse on the market as far as what folks are looking for. These sound like establishments that will fit very well into our downtown and appeal to, you know, a broad market of people of all demographics and ages and, and places in life. And, you know, we're excited to see how everything unfolds and, and probably you more than ever, we can't wait for you to open, so.
Thank you very much.
We just appreciate you taking the time here to, to, to continue pushing the envelope and coming up with new concepts and we're eager to try it, so. Thank you, good to see you.
You too.
All right, well, if there's no other comments, I'll, I'll call for the vote, we'll start with Commissioner Duba.
Yes.
Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Prush. Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
And I vote yes, unanimous, all right, good luck, Adam.
All right, thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Ms. Allen, take care.
You too.
All right, this brings us to item twelve on the agenda tonight, which is request to one-time only refund twenty twenty-one class C liquor license fees, partially rebate already paid twenty twenty-one class C liquor license fees.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, aren't we on traffic committee recommendations?
Oh, you know what, you are right, we moved that one up, I was thinking we moved it after both liquor license items, but you are correct, so we will move to the formerly item number fifteen, the approval of the November twenty twenty traffic committee resolutions. We'll start with Ms. Donahue here and then there were a couple items that popped out during public comment that we'll probably discuss a little further, so Ms. Donahue.
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, we have Chairman Dan Godek with us and he is going to present the various recommendations that the traffic committee put together at our last meeting on November twenty-fourth. So Dan, go ahead.
Great, it's good to, good to see you all. I assume you can see me and hear me okay?
We can, Mr. Goddick, good to see you.
Okay, it's, and thank you for this opportunity to speak on these items and, and also thank you for your, for your service and if I forget, happy holidays to you all. As Holly mentioned, we did have a number of resolutions and it looks like we were popular on your public comments section as well. On, on the very first page of your resolutions document, it, at the end of each paragraph is, it references our item number six A, six B, six C and so on. And I'll cover these briefly and Holly or myself can go more into depth. But item six A, pardon me, was a request for adding two stop signs, one at Irving and Sixth and one at Kaiser and Sixth. We looked at this, no one spoke on it during our meeting and Royal Oak has a grid setup with stop signs and alternate. And this, the study shows that we, there was no warrants for adding additional stop signs and we voted to, in, in step with the city, I recommend, the, all these groups recommendation on denying that request. The next one was, the one you got a couple of public comments on was Florence, where there is a no outlet sign on the easement of someone's property and, and that's the person, persons who are opposed to it. We, we looked at this one as a, real quick, a safety improvement. There's Edgewood tees into Florence, right where the sign is at and it, it, from our viewpoint, it, it was another step in letting people know that they can't continue on Florence and that they should either turn on Edgewood or not enter any further, so. And we saw some evidence of, of people getting to the end and using driveways to turn around and it made more sense to, to have that sign in place than not. So we unanimously voted for denying the removal of that sign. Quickly, we have the succeed. This was the signal on Normandy. That was damaged in August and not repaired and with the information presented, there was, some comments were made by Mr. McGee about incomplete data and some of the reference to average was misstated, but even if we factored in an error of ten to, you know, the, the lack of, of having more, more days into the information that we got, it still didn't meet warrants, but a repairer replaced that pedestrian signal. And we've done this in a few other locations where the signal is no longer warranted and it was originally installed, installed for a school, I believe, in the nineteen eighties that is no longer open, that I can't recall the name of. And it's a twenty-five mile an hour road and there's no sight distance problem, so we also voted unanimously to take staff recommendation on this one and to not reinstall that signal. Just a couple more and we can go into more detail or however you feel. Next item six D was to terminate the lease agreement with the Grand Trunk Western Railroad that goes along Seventh Street, right adjacent to the Royal Manor, which is a senior community. These folks have come in front of us multiple times in the last few years about trying to improve their parking situation. And this offers that opportunity and I think Holly did a great job on bringing this forward. And this offers that opportunity. I think um Holly did a great job on bringing this forward and looking at terminating a lease agreement that was originally entered to and I believe in, in the 60s. And so um, this is a feel good one that uh we filed staff recommendation on and voted unanimously also to uh terminate that lease agreement and offer some more opportunity to expand parking for the Royal Manor. 6E was um looking into the speed limit on Main Street uh from 11 through the city limits. And uh, a, a lot of data was presented on this. And uh, we typically look at the 85th percentile for uh judging whether the speed needs to be adjusted, speed limit signs. I'd probably defer to Holly on her expertise in this area, but our recommendation was with staff and to increase the speed limit um between um 12 mile and north uh city limits to 30 and uh leave the rest of it at 25. That was also, I forgot to mention with, with uh inline staff recommendation. And the last item was uh to uh, another thing that um Holly and Recruit did an excellent job on was the various options. And if you guys do want to get to more in detail on this one, I would recommend that we uh go further into the information that Holly presented, but there was a number of options to try to deal with cut through traffic on the four streets mentioned, Albert, Merrill Parker. There, there's basically no decision here. We just uh wanted to make this resolution that uh uh we could uh move on with presenting these options to the residents. Um, my only take on it a little bit was to maybe try to um categorize the options uh from least drastic to most drastic. You know, partial closure being the most drastic, pardon me, and uh the least would just be signage. It, it's a big problem to try to tackle and, and uh deserves a lot of, of, of more discussion and, and information gathering. But that, that's just a quick overview of everything we did and uh we'd be happy to answer questions and refer to Holly.
Okay, questions to Mr. Godek? Mr. Macy.
Um, for item 6C on the signal at Normandy and Durham Road, um was there a discussion at the traffic committee about upcoming Normandy Oaks Park? We hope bombardment of people who will be going to the park, both walking and driving in that area a, as you were looking at this?
Not that I can recall, um Holly could probably chime in on that too, but we, we try to look at what we know now. Um, and you know, the information that uh was presented was uh a, a study of, of, of uh what's happening currently or in the past. Like, we look at if there's any accidents or um, you know, problems that warrant putting a sign in at this time. That certainly doesn't stop you or this committee from looking at it in the future when what you say hopefully will come true where there'll be crowds of people trying to access the park. Um, and at that time, uh, you know, a signal might be better placed somewhere else. Um, Holly did go into um uh, the last part of this resolution talks about in um, in the future, we're actually going to resurface the roads in that area and putting a refuge island or a bump out would possibly be better than a signal. So that was discussed.
Yes. Oh, sorry, go.
I was just gonna add that um, you know, had this study shown that we were kind of on the edge of meeting one of the warrants. We probably would start thinking, okay, what's going to happen here in the future? But we were so far away from meeting any of the traffic warrants, primarily because Durham doesn't have a whole lot of traffic on it. And you need that two-way traffic to really get to the warrant for a signal. So I don't know that that's going to really impact the warrant for a signal at that location. However, I, I do feel pretty strongly that these pedestrian islands, which are planning to do all along Normandy, not just at this location, um will just help to slow down traffic, maybe cause people to pay attention to the, the fact that there's a park around them, um give easier access for people to get across the street to the parks as well.
Um, and that, that, looking at the, at the road again is 2022?
Was 2022 or 23? I have to look it up.
I mean, one thing I, I understand what you're saying.
Twenty-three.
One thing, 23. It just, I mean, sort of happenstance that we've been looking at this, right? Somebody took out the signal. Kind of don't want to encourage people to go take out signals they don't want with the hopes of we'll do a traffic study and remove it. So, and I just feel like I'm, I'm wondering, there's so much excitement building up around Normandy Oaks and this is a signal that people have been accustomed to using to get to that area and everyone is thinking the same thing I'm thinking or hoping the same thing I'm hoping that it's, there's going to be so many people going there. It, it, there's an appearance to this, like it looks like we're going backwards, like we're discouraging people from crossing when that's not what we want to do. So while I understand the math and the engineering of it, I'm still inclined to put it back and then take a look at it again in 23 and see what is in fact warranted for that for all of Normandy. Like, are we, should we be putting pedestrian islands at different spots and then removing that signal? That's just my sense of it, looking at this, but I totally understand where, why the committee made the decision it did.
Ms. Donahue, I have a quick question for you. How much does that cost to put a signal in?
Uh, it really depends on the location, but it's in the 75,000 to $100,000 range.
Yeah, so it's not cheap. Um, and I do agree, actually, I just used, I, I went for a, we had an early dinner tonight, went for a, a walk. Uh, my wife and I, and we use the one on Campbell, the pedestrian uh crossing, and it, it works really, really well. The, the pedestrian island and you see folks, I see, you know, when school was in, on um, you know, Main Street, the kids with their you know, instruments and everything coming from the middle school using, using the crossings. The, the question I have, so, so an automobile or a truck hit this. Do, did we receive any sort of, I mean, insurance compensation or anything that we can put into a fund for a, a future pedestrian crossing here or, or signal or something like that? Or is this strictly coming out of the budget and that's unrecoverable? Because it, I mean, it wasn't our fault that this was, was taken down.
So we do have a police report. It, it was a tow truck driving, I think that was too, too high and it struck the signal and that's what caused it to fail and ultimately had to be taken down as a safety issue. So I, I can say that we have the police report and the driver and the insurance information. I'm not really an expert on what we do with that, but it's more probably Julie Rudd's department. Um, but I believe we could go after it to replace in kind. We couldn't ask for any upgrades, obviously, but just to replace a traffic signal in kind seems reasonable, but I can't be sure that that's how that will go.
You know, because I'd be, I mean, I, I understand where the traffic committee is coming from. I understand the warrants, uh, which is tough. Uh, because, you know, I mean, we have to be jurisprudent about where we spend our money, how we spend our money and, and, you know, you can't have, you know, pedestrian crossings literally at every single block or, you know, you might just have a complete other situation where people are getting impatient and trafficked and speeding. I mean, it's a whole, you know, uh, situation that you're trying to balance and manage within a traffic ecosystem. But is there a um, a thought that we could collect uh on that particular incident, put that money in reserve? And then, you know, we look at doing the road in 2023, we can use those funds for either a new signal, if we have to put it somewhere else there based on the demand for the park. Or, you know, do the islands, which seemed to me, you know, you can put more of them in and, you know, brings more awareness for the drivers uh because they see something there. Is that, what is that? You know, people tend to slow down, which is appropriate if they're designed right. And then, you know, in the interim, you know, can we just have a normal designated area for people to cross, maybe with a um, a flashing light that was suggested in a public comment? You know, just to, to give people, you know, extra awareness that folks are crossing there. Just some thoughts. Anybody else? Commissioner Duba?
Um, so I, you know, I agree with folks at public comment that there, there definitely needs to be a crossing there, particularly with increased traffic. We're going to see, hopefully, you know, with the tremendous use in Normandy Oaks. But I guess what I'm, my understanding is um, we're not recommending reinstallation or traffic committee is not recommending the reinstallation of it where it was because we have an opportunity to make sure that we're capitalizing on the situation and putting it in the best possible place for the best possible use. And that could include just doing more of those medians, so there's more safe crossing points. Is that, am I understanding that right? Like, we're, we're going to make a plan going forward. It's just not necessarily this. Is that right, Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess the question is, you know, there's, I think, a legitimate concern, even though I know that our, our study showed um the traffic volumes there right now do not warrant this level of infrastructure. But to the mayor's point, what alternatives, I would like to see what alternatives we can consider in the near term and make sure there's a safe crossing point until we get whatever our long-term sustainable plan is there. So, but what are the low-cost you know, low barrier entry um options on the table that won't burn up, whether it's, we get dollars from a, a lawsuit or, you know, from, from whoever took the light out, or whether it's, you know, just our general fund dollars building this, you know, what can we do at low cost in the near term until we determine exactly what the, the best path forward is?
Well, our intention was to put in, right now, we already have crosswalk signs at the crossing itself um just to alert drivers. And if this moves forward, our recommendation was to install the warning signs 200 feet in each direction, just to let, again, drivers know. And, and that's, that's kind of what all we were planning until we actually make some significant improvements in 2023. Um, doing something like a flashing pedestrian sign, uh, while it seems simple for sure. I remember at the signs that we did on 11 Mile by the Imagine Theater, I think those were around the order of $10,000 to $12,000 or something. So not huge dollars, but that's a pretty big expense for something that you might just do for a couple of years. So that's, that's my take on it.
And, I mean, I don't know if we actually studied those, but I, I live right near that intersection and as I recall, drivers are having a real hard time uh respecting that and understanding that that being let up means you have to stop and give way to the pedestrian.
Commissioner Purush.
Um, just a couple of things as I'm sitting here. Um, we're all picturing Normandy and Oaks opening, but having the primary entrance to the park on the Normandy side being closer to where Elks Park now intersects with Normandy Oaks. Um, just because that's just the natural entry point. But keep in mind that in the spring, that a cyclone fence, which is around Normandy Oaks, is all going to come down. Which means that there's going to be entrance points along all of Normandy Road. There's not going to be any fence, to my recollection, there. Which means pedestrians are going to be able to, if they're so inclined, not necessarily walk to a designated pedestrian crossing, but just walk across Normandy Road and enter the park at any point. They're not going to have to go down to an entry point down by Elks Park or around where the parking lot is going to be. They're going to be able to enter it at any number of locations because the fences is not going to be a barrier to that. Uh, so I think it's, it's, it's prudent to wait to do anything more permanent um until we see how that all operates and how pedestrians actually interact with that Normandy traffic situation. Um, once the park is open, because I have a feeling that there's going to be an awful lot of people who are not going to go all the way down the block or two blocks or three blocks to a pedestrian um crossing in order to get to the park when they can just go right across the street when traffic clears and, and enter the park. That's point number one. Number two, um there was a situation that I'm aware of where a neighbor was parking down in one of the parking lots downtown, which is now a building. It's not a parking lot anymore. And actually bumped a sign and damaged a sign. And it, it, the sign had to be not completely replaced, but put back into position. And the city didn't sue them, but they got a bill. They got an invoice from the city saying, look, it cost us $95 to put the sign back in place. You, you caused this accident. There was a police report. They knew who the person was. Um, you gotta pay us back for having the DPS go out there and fix the sign. There was no lawsuit. There was no, you know, legal action. They just got a bill. And I have, I don't know why the, the towing company or whoever hit the sign couldn't just get a bill. You know, it caused damage. This is what we have to do to repair it or fix it. Give us the money, please, because you damaged, you damaged the sign. Um, my third point is that I drive down Normandy, that section of Normandy fairly frequently, especially in the summer when we were going to parks a lot. Um, and my sense is that there are big gaps in the traffic between the light that's at Coolidge and the light that's at Crooks Road that allows fairly easy pedestrian access across at an intersection, whether it's at Rosewood, which is where the crossing spot is now, um, or even further down, if you just want to go across the road and not be in a designated pedestrian area. There are fairly significant gaps in the traffic, just the way the lights are timed. Um, and so I know that in other situations where there aren't those gaps and we can't control the traffic like that. A pedestrian signal is, is warranted and worthwhile. But in just visualizing the traffic patterns for the last six months or so, I just don't see the difficulty in, in having pedestrians having problems crossing the road. I just don't think the traffic, number one, the volume is that high. And number two, the timing is so significant that it doesn't create those safe gaps for pedestrians to be able to cross, whether it's at this intersection or at another intersection that's down closer to Coolidge. Um, I, I just, I just don't see the significant need right now. I think we can wait until the park is open and then reassess.
Yeah, Commissioner Purush, that's a really good point about the fences coming down, which sort of gives a little bit of credence to what uh Ms. Donahue is hypothesizing about the pedestrian islands maybe being a little spaced out. Uh, if, if that's an approach we want to take, um, you know, in the future, if you have a lot of people just, you know, flopping over Normandy at various spots and not using the actual intersections, which are a little bit more safe. Uh, as you approach an intersection, drive a little bit more aware than, than jaywalking, so to speak. Good points. Okay, anybody else? Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, so I, I've looked into this quite a bit over the weekend and I've spoken with Ms. Donahue and um, yeah, a, a couple of thoughts I have is um it's, you know, first, uh, especially with uh considering what Commissioner Purush just said. Um, unfortunately, Normandy doesn't have any sidewalks on at the South Park. Crossing cross into any spot. You, you have to unfortunately enter right now on the Delamere side or the Elks Park side. So this is one of the last spots that you can cross if you're in a wheelchair until you get to Delamere Avenue. So, you know, when I'm thinking, yeah, yes, I mean, I will just sprint across the road if I wanted to, if I was going from the neighborhood. But I, I think we also, we all consider, you know, who else is going across the road? I think Mr. Break looked like he had a comment he wanted to make about the funding and how to get the money back from the potential tow truck. I'd want to hear that and then maybe talk about how we can use that money.
Um, and so certainly can uh, uh, address that and thank you, Commissioner Colo. The only thing I was going to mention, I'm not an expert in Michigan no-fault law and I would defer to the city attorney, but, but we can certainly collect. Uh, but how that is stipulated, that if it's restored back to the original use, I don't know if you can set aside those funds. So I would defer to uh interim city attorney McLaughlin, that uh probably is better versed at the Michigan no-fault law than I am, but we can certainly go after damages.
Ms. McLaughlin?
And yes, Mayor, um, and to Commissioner Purush's point and the point just um made by Mr. Break. The Michigan no-fault law does provide for property protection insurance um benefits to a property that is damaged by a motor vehicle, um, in a moving motor vehicle accident. This certainly would qualify. It does not require a showing of fault. It only requires showing that the motor vehicle was involved and that the motor vehicle caused the damage. It is uh mandatory insurance, just like the, what everybody I think is probably familiar with, the PIP, which is the medical payments and wage loss and that sort of thing. Um, this is more known as PPI, which is property protection insurance. Um, and everybody's insurance policy in the state of Michigan has this coverage up to a million dollars. So um, there is definitely a, an avenue for the city to um recon, um, recoup its losses um with respect to that accident.
So, thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. And so what I'd be interested in doing is recouping those losses, um, that $75,000 single. And then in the meantime, until that's going to be a process, it's going to take a while. I, I would be in favor of paying the, the $10,000 solution the flashers in. Um, right now, it's three years until we reimagine this road. So, you know, the, I, I think that's kind of a compromise that, that still provides that visual warning, like, hey, please stop. Um, you know, please slow. You know, please slow down, someone wants to cross the street. It's paid for by someone else, and I think Ms. Donahue is going to come up with some really cool ideas on what we could do to this road in three years. And I think it's kind of like a little band-aid on that until we get there.
One other point, I'm sorry. If I may, Mr. Mayor, one other point. Do we know when this damage occurred?
August of this year.
August, okay. Because we have one year to make a claim. And really what it should simply involve is a claim to the insurer of the tow truck. That's all it should involve. There shouldn't be litigation. There shouldn't be a lot of process. It should be almost as simple as what Commissioner Perush suggested, which is send them a bill. But, but you can make a claim, and, you know, I can certainly initiate that process if we know who the tow truck driver is, who owns the vehicle, and who insures the vehicle.
Yeah, we definitely need to do that. We have a police report with it. You know, it's a, it's a no-brainer. Question for Ms. Donahue. We talk about the flashing light at $10,000. Is that something that if we can pop it up and move it, or is that $10,000 to install, or is that, you know, the cost of the sign? You know, I'm trying to think of what's a, what's an asset and what's a sunk expense.
Uh, that, that was the total cost. So installation, restoration of pavement, things like that. I, I don't know what the cost of the sign itself is. We do have a pair, the pair that we took down from Imagine, but we are planning to put those next year on Main Street. So those are already spoken for. I believe that's all we have in stock right now. So we need to order a couple new ones.
Okay, but, but the reality is, is that we can reuse these signs if we went down this route, and it wouldn't be the full $10,000 cost if we found another home forum in the city.
Correct.
Okay. So, maybe it's five, you know, if we split the difference. Who knows? Okay. All right, Commissioner Macy.
Uh, so I, I like the plan that Commissioner Colo's come up, but I wanted to give Ms. Donahue, before we start voting on things, a chance to say, before you do that, here's another $10,000 solution, dollar solution that's better. Do you have something like that, or is this like kind of the next best option?
Yeah, that's probably the next, next step, first few signs, and you have blinking signs, and you have a traffic signal, or, you know, islands or something like that. So I'm a little wary of these signs. Sometimes I think they give pedestrians too much confidence because drivers aren't, I don't think they're required to stop until someone's foot is actually on that crosswalk. If somebody's waiting for the car, they don't have to stop, and people argue all the time about them. So they make me a little wary, and they also make me wary because you put one up, and then all of a sudden, why isn't there one here? Why isn't there one here? And then we have flashing beacons all over the city. So you just want to be wise about where you put them. But this was a place that had a signal previously. It doesn't seem out of the realm of, of what, what would be normal to do here, so.
What about those middle-of-the-road bollard thingies? Are those good or no?
Uh, I think those are primarily just for, like, bike lanes to separate, like, paths.
That's what we have in Main Street.
Oh, the, I'm sorry, I thought you meant something else. No, we've never done those not in the downtown before. I don't know if I've ever seen them not in the downtown.
Okay.
They get hit.
Yeah. You're very good at knocking out your ultrasonic sensors on your cars if you have them.
I don't.
All right. All right, so, so we talked about, this was 6C, right? So we talked about that one. And from what I hear is that there's probably, I mean, it doesn't have to be part of a resolution or anything to go and file a claim or, or send a note or a bill and collect on the property damage. There's been, you know, some talk about whether or not to add a flashing light there and what that would cost, and, you know, some, some options we have clearly down the road. Once, uh, everything gets established and rooted there, we can, we can make a more permanent decision that, that meets the interest of everybody there. And then, of course, we have a few other items that the Traffic Committee recommended. 6B being the next one. I heard several people call in at public comment about the sign on Florence. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I drove down to, to look at that, that site, and and, and as you saw in the attachments to our agenda, there is not only a no-traffic-outlet sign on the right-of-way in front of 529 Florence, there's also a dead-end sign at the end of that street. And I am hard-pressed to imagine any vehicle accidentally driving down that spur and, and the driver going, oh, my, my lord, it's a dead end. I never knew that. I, I think the condition is pretty obvious. As others have pointed out, further up the street, there's a sign that says no outlet for potentially drivers or trucks or delivery vehicles. The, the traffic study that was done essentially measured traffic going to the house at 525 Florence, because there's, there's nothing past that. So I'm, I'm hard-pressed to figure out who is driving down that street other than the people who already live there. I look at 529 Florence. They've already been in, so many years ago, there was a small house at 525 Florence and the existing one at 529, and they shared a driveway. And clearly, when the new house was built, the, the property line was redefined, and the people at 529 Florence lost access to their, I mean, can't even, so far as I can tell, drive into and park in their garage in their backyard. So they've already been, incurred a hardship in that regard. Now they've got a, you know, no outlet sign on their very small right-of-way in front of their house, which they have to mow around. I'm inclined to recommend that that no outlet sign be removed. I'll entertain other opinions here, but that would be my recommendation.
Anybody else? Commissioner Macy?
Um, interesting, Chair. So I came to the same conclusion, that it feels like we don't need that outlet sign there. But I did hear from both Ms. Donahue and Mr. Godak about this, and they both felt it was a safety issue. So, I mean, I came, I did the same calculations that you did, Commissioner Douglas, and I came to the same conclusion, but I'm not the city engineer, and I'm not on the Traffic Committee, and it felt like a challenge to overcome that. So I feel torn on this issue, because if I had been on the Traffic Committee, I would have voted, I would have voted to remove this, but I wasn't, and it was unanimously, unanimously voted to stay, which so that's what, that's what's come to us. So, and that's not clarifying, I don't think, but it's not clarifying to me either. So I'm just throwing it out there.
Commissioner Duba.
Uh, yeah, I guess I'm honestly torn, because looking at the situation, it does feel unnecessary, and given that there's clearly a lot of residents that seem to feel very strongly that they don't want it there. I, I guess, uh, can we get clarity? Is, is the purpose of the sign, is it pure, is, is the primary function of that sign for public safety? Or is the primary function of the sign for the convenience of the residents who would have to deal with turnaround traffic? Is it, is it? What's the dominant reason for the sign? Is it public safety, or is it just the convenience of the homeowners? And if it's convenience of homeowners, I'm willing to say, well, if they don't want it, I don't, I don't need it there. Ms. Donahue?
So it's a little bit of both. This one, it's a hard one, because things kind of went not by the book. The former city engineer had approved installation of the sign one year ago, as well as cleaning up the dead end and adding that dead-end sign, which normally we, we bring things through the Traffic Committee so that they can be, you know, blessed by the commission, and we have kind of backup for why something was done. In this case, I think he, I, I don't actually know, but I think he probably felt it's warranted. I'm just going to go ahead and install this. We heard from the other homeowner at 525, the Eastern Mill property, at the Traffic Committee meeting, I don't believe she called in tonight, saying that she had a lot of hardship with people coming to the end, coming in her driveway, driving all over her yard. And also, when people were trying to turn around, it wasn't a three-point turn. It was like a 10-point turn, because the road was so narrow, if there was like a car parked down the street. So, so we weren't feeling super strong one way or the other. Should the sign stay? Should the sign go? This homeowner had said that it improved her situation, that it helped. You know, to us, it was, it's the sign and the easement. It wasn't really a hardship for an owner. But, but like I said, this is a tricky one. It's not a super easy answer to give here.
Well, I agree. When I'm not necessarily really seeing the hardship either for the sign being there. So I mean, if there is a really, if there's a compelling reason for, I saw the letter from the resident who thought that there was a marked improvement on the street. I assume that that resident did not reach out about this meeting, because they got a unanimous vote from the Traffic Committee, and assumed that that, along with their support, was going to be enough. I, I'm actually not quite understanding from the, you know, that we got one pretty lengthy message that someone just thought of being on the property was a hardship, but clearly it's in the public right, right-of-way. I don't think that qualifies as a hardship, so. But other than, than just not wanting it there, were, were there any arguments articulated to the Traffic Committee against that make a case for it to not be there?
Mayor, if I, if I may?
Mr. Godak, if you want to chime in?
It was kind of a double negative question. The, um, we, we looked at a couple of the things that I think might be being missed, is that Edgewood does tee into this, into the street, right where that sign is at. And the Adam and Jody Miller, who has the property at the very end of the street, actually provided a photo, it's on page 50 of 103 of your, of your handout tonight, of her Nest camera showing a vehicle turning around, crossing her front lawn, and, and going over the easement to get around. It's, if, if you do travel to the very end of the street, you're, you're not going to be able to turn around safely. And, and that's, that was kind of the, the gist of where we at. Where we're at with this one is that we felt, looking at sign or no sign, a, a sign being a more safer choice for this particular area.
That's, that's helpful. And I guess, you know, I'm here to see what everyone else has to say, but I'm, I, I feel like you all looked into it, heard from the residents, and unanimously voted for this. I'm not hearing anything compelling enough for, for me to support overturning your recommendation. So unless there's new information that I'm not understanding.
Commissioner Colo, and then Commissioner Perush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So like everyone here, I'm sure, I also drove down this, and I've had a lot of conversations with Ms. Donahue, which is probably an amazing amount that she ever thought she would have for a single sign on a 100-foot street. I did, I was having a hard time seeing the hardship until Commissioner Douglas spoke tonight. I didn't realize that the petition, 525, no longer had access to their garage. And I guess I also tend not realize the small length of frontage that they, they have. But it is a, you give me a look at Google Maps, you see it's quite a small frontage there. And, I mean, it is almost comical when you drive down the street, down Florence, as you approach Edgewood, you're hit by a dead end. Like, it smacks you in the face that you're coming up to it. You, you cannot miss that dead end. So I would wonder if the only person who might miss the fact that there's a dead end is going to be someone who's coming down Edgewood. Edgewood, though, in this case, essentially looks like an alley to me. I mean, it looks like it is, it, it looks like it was an afterthought. If there's no homes that actually on it, it just connects by the by道 there. I wonder if a right turn only, or, you know, no left turn would be more appropriate. I think that'd be placed on the side of a home on Edgewood. I, I'm sure the, the homeowner at 525 just hates the fact that there's a big sign in their front yard that, you know, I mean, it hits you when you walk into their home, essentially. I wonder if this is all solved by having a no-right turn off of Edgewood, I'm sorry, no-left turn off of Edgewood, so you would have to turn right onto Florence. You cannot turn into the dead end. So that way, you're notified basically on both sides. You see it coming down Florence, and you can't turn onto Edgewood. That might be more of a a solution. I, I think, too, that, that there is clearly a neighbors who are not getting along on this block. It's unfortunate. I think we're in the middle of this. So I, I think that this might be an applicable solution that solves a lot of people's problems. We have the person who doesn't want a sign in the yard. We have the person who doesn't want someone to turn around in their yard. So I think that sign, which would be on the side of someone's house at 602 Florence, if we put the sign on that property that says no-left turn, that might be a little better way to get through this, keeping everyone happy and, you know, solving the same objectives. I spoke to Ms. Donahue. We, so when we pay, we pay for traffic studies, you know, we can do them. They, they're prepaid here. You know, maybe we do a year-long study and see if that's the way to do it. And Commissioner Douglas, I will say that Ms. Donahue is one who had recommended, and I will let Ms. Donahue say this, someone who had recommended, if, if we are going to do a study, let's do it, you know, let, let's do a full study on it. But if, if anyone wants to talk about that, that's what I have.
Commissioner Perush?
Um, I took a look at the situation also today, and didn't realize until I was actually in that area how close Edgewood is to the end of Florence and to the whole situation. I can see drivers coming down the block from Maxwell in that direction and seeing the no-outlet sign ahead of them, but thinking, oh, but I'm going to go down anyway because I'm looking for X, and not realizing until they get to the end that not only is there no outlet there, which they knew about, but they were hoping that there would be a convenient place to turn around. But there really isn't a very good convenient place to turn around. And the only place they have is the driveway that we're talking about, where we have the photographic evidence that cars are driving over the curb and into the lawn in order to turn around, because the space is so narrow. So I think the home at the end of the block actually has a, a significant hardship, where she's the one that is getting all of the turnaround traffic. They're all turning into her driveway, and they're potentially damaging her lawn, or the lawn that she has to maintain, because they can't effectively turn around, especially when there's a lot of cars parked in the street, which were not there during the day when I was there, but are probably there at night. So I think she's got a significant hardship. I, and I honestly don't see the hardship of having a sign in your front yard. That's fairly common. There's a lot of signs. There's guy wires. There's telephone poles. There's fire plugs. There's all kinds of other things that people have in their front lawn. We have a couple of those. You deal with. I, I just don't see that significant as a hardship. And so in terms of balancing hardships between the two property owners, I come in on the, on the side of the, the one who is having to put up with cars turning around in front of her that make it down to the end of the block, thinking that there's a much better way to turn around, because there usually is. But there's not in this situation, and they end up in her front yard. So, and granted, the traffic counts are not that high. But on the other hand, they're, they're significant enough so that she raises the issue and says, you know, it's a potential danger to her children to have them playing out in that area because of the potential of someone turning around. And so, to me, that weighs in favor of leaving this sign here. Who knows how much good it really does? And on the other hand, if she's advocating that in fact it has diminished some traffic down in that area, which she did, then I think, then I think it should stay.
Ms. Donahue, I have a question for, I'm going to get to Commissioner Douglas in one second. I just had a question. So, did the Traffic Committee look at, maybe Mr. Godak, you can answer this as well. When you look at the, the sign in the back, what if that sign was bigger at the end of the street? Would that just be too obnoxious to have a, a larger sign at the end that sticks out more from a distance versus the standard sign that's kind of small? I mean, we're using two signs to inform drivers of this situation. You know, is it, I mean, could you solve it by putting a much bigger sign at the end of the street that says no outlet?
We could put a bigger sign. What was installed, I think, is just the standard, I don't know if it's 36 by 36 or 24 by 24. I didn't pay that much attention to it.
Maybe with some reflectors and...
It kind of feels like a, a solution that maybe, maybe it's a feel-good solution. I, I don't know that we can say that's really going to help.
Yeah, we don't have any data or evidence, and, and I don't advocate for doing a traffic study on a two-house street, although I appreciate Commissioner Colo bringing up some of the logic. Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. To, to Commissioner Colo's point about installing a no-left turn sign on South Edgewood, here's what I, I picture, and that is delivery vehicles who are just following some random Google map, not realizing that Edgewood is in bad repair there and, and underutilized. That is, the vehicles that might be coming along Edgewood, planning to turn left onto Florence are Florence are delivery vehicles and probably not necessarily, um, local residents. I mean, who's going to turn there who isn't actually looking for that destination? So I, I am, uh, I am sympathize with the fact that somebody drove over their lawn, but I'm just incredulous that the, the big dead end sign at the end of the street isn't sufficient to deter people. Or let us say, if that didn't deter people, the no outlet sign, I don't think is going to deter them. Um, and I further suspect that many of the people who are turning around in the driveway at 525 are guests of the people who live at 529. Um, and of course, 529 doesn't have a sufficient enough driveway for their guests to park in or turn around. So that's just, if, if there are people turning around at 525, I don't think it's people who are lost, um, and stumble down that street. I think it's people who are guests or who live on that street.
Which would explain the reduction, given the fact that, you know, guests are limited now, you know, during the pandemic. Commissioner Macy.
Yeah, my other, I mean, I like the idea of thinking of some other sign, although I tend to agree with Commissioner Douglas, like if you were coming down that street, you can't see, it's not just like there's a sign, there's like this huge wall, you know, you can see all the greenery as you approach, like, I, I don't know, I don't think that sign is the thing that's going to be like, aha, now I have to turn around. Like you either know that you're going to try to turn around there or you're not. So I don't, I don't know. And the no left turn sign, well, that's a good idea. I think this is kind of what Commissioner Douglas was getting at. It's like, it's not actually accurate. Like you can turn left there, there's two houses. Like if you're trying to visit your friends at 525 and 529, there is a left turn, you could go there. Um, and I guess part of this, which has come up in a lot of our comments, is that this is definitely a dispute again, between neighbors. I have the sense that, that like the city is kind of being used as a weapon in this dispute, which I, I don't love. So I kind of feel like the installation of a sign was one piece of that and the removal of the sign would be another piece, but I almost feel like the removal might be neutralizing it back to the, to the original form. So I remain really torn about this, but it, it does seem like we're spending a lot of time on this sign that, that pretty much all of us agree is not a necessary sign. And I think we're going to keep hearing about it if, if it remains there. Yeah, that's right.
All right. Commissioner Colo.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the traffic committee recommendations with removal of 6B and 6C.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Colos or a second, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. No discussion, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Perush.
Yeah.
And Macy.
Yes.
And Colo.
Yes.
Mr. Dubac.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, Commissioner Colo.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we send item 6C, uh, back to the traffic committee for recommendations on a flashing system.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Colo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion.
I'm also willing to amend this to, uh, we can do it at the table if that's, if we can do it now, I'm proud of that too.
Okay, so, so what you, so let's have some discussion and then someone can have an amendment on it. We'll go with Commissioner Douglas first.
Yeah, I don't feel like that was a major thrust of our discussion, or I don't have a sense that that was a priority around the table, and it isn't for me as well. I think Commissioner Perush made a good case for, um, waiting to see what kind of demand we get for people crossing Normandy at, or yeah, crossing Normandy, uh, to access the new park. So I guess I'm not inclined to incur that expense at this point. Um, and then I'm going to trust that the staff will go, do not need our, uh, direction to go forward on a claim against the insurer of the vehicle that damaged the light originally.
Who's next? Commissioner Macy.
So I was looking confused because I wasn't sure if we have to send this back or if we can just do it here. So I don't know if this was the general feeling around the table. Commissioner Douglas seems to think it wasn't, but I agree with Commissioner Colo that although Commissioner Perush made a great point about accessibility to the park, it's in fact not accessible for many people because there's no sidewalk at all on, on the Normandy side. So if you want to get into the park there, um, if you have a stroller or you are using a wheelchair or some other assisted mobility device, it's challenging to do that anywhere except where there's a crosswalk and a path in. Um, and I think if we're pursuing this, a $7,000 claim against someone who destroyed our light, we can certainly spend $10,000 for the next three years as Normandy Oaks comes online in the, in the spring to make this a somewhat safer, um, path. And I understand that maybe it's not the perfect solution and we don't know if it would be as effective as we want it to be, but it's something. And, um, I think the people who've been crossing there up until now, we've heard from several of them tonight, feel like that's, it's a safety issue as well. So anyway, that's why I'm supporting it, but I'm confused about whether or not we have to send it back or can just do it.
Right, I think, uh, maybe Commissioner Macy, if you wanted to make an amendment, I don't think we kick it back to, um, our traffic committee because they've evaluated all of this. I think that if we're going to pull a small audible, then we should just do it here. So if, if you made a motion to amend the original motion to, um, remove the kicking it back to the traffic committee and just make that decision here, I think that would be acceptable at this time.
So moved, thank you for phrasing it for me, Mayor.
A motion by Commissioner Macy and second by Commissioner Colo, discussion.
I wish you would rephrase it for me in the first place.
Well, that's going to cost you your $20 tonight. Commissioner Dubac.
I'm sorry, what is the amendment again?
The, so Commissioner Colo had originally recommended that we send this back, 6C back to the traffic committee, uh, to talk about a flashing light and the, the wisdom changed to say that, well, let's not send it back to traffic committee, let's just at this body decide to, um, yes or no, implement a flashing light on the motion versus sending it back.
So the amendment is to approve the recommendation, not reinstall the crosswalk, but to install, to drive staff to install flashers?
Yeah, as a, yeah, as opposed to, um, sending that back to the traffic committee to evaluate.
So, um, I mean, I guess I'm okay with that, but I think kind of aligned with what Commissioner Perush had said about, uh, people being to enter anywhere. I agree, um, when those fences come down, everywhere it becomes an entryway, but when you create a pathway, uh, a crosswalk and then a connection to the park there, you're actually going to create a de facto auxiliary parking lot. So I think it's highly likely that people on this street connected to, uh, this crosswalk are, they're going to be in front of us in a year and a half complaining that their street is full of parked cars where people are parking there and then using that crosswalk to get into the park. So I, point being, the intent here is that this is temporary until we identify what our long-term solution is that aligns really with, um, the best use of the space and the dollars and getting people in and out of that park safely. Is that, is that correct?
I mean, I think that's the intent of the motion, yeah. I think we're all aligned with looking at a, you know, as the park opens up, as the fence comes down, finding what the, the right, um, long-term strategy is. I think, uh, currently right now is where it stands in the recommendation. Uh, there will be signs put in there to identify pedestrian crossings. However, it's just, uh, in this motion, uh, that's different from the traffic committee is just the, uh, for $10,000, the, um, implementation of a flasher system, uh, of which it's, you know, um, that system could be redeployed and reused either in that area or another part of the, the city. So, you know, is it the full 10,000? Okay, but you know, we can use 10,000 for, for, you know, these purposes. But right now, we're just doing an amendment. So to be clear, the motion that's on the table right now is to amend it to not have this go to traffic committee that, that we make the decision here. So, uh, Commissioner Macy.
Just briefly, I wanted to maybe reassure Commissioner Dubac because, um, the parking lot, the crossing is right next to the Elks Park parking lot. So the parking will go, the people who drive there should park there first before they park across the street.
All right, so let's, let's vote on this amendment to, so we can get to a motion that we can, uh, can finesse if we have to. Um, I'm going to call for the vote, we'll go with Commissioner Dubac. Mr. Colo.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Perush. Commissioner Perush.
Sorry.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so now we're back to the original motion modified not to have to send this back to the, um, traffic committee. Uh, and so we can, we can open up further discussion on, on the original motion as amended. I'll just, I'll just add that, uh, you know, I, I think it's going to be interesting to see, we, I, I think we can presume what people are going to do, but you know, we got a new neighborhood up there. We also have to account for people, you know, coming from the Robertson's development and from the other side, you know, near the park coming in, you know, crossing Normandy for other reasons to go for walks and do whatever. So it'll be interesting to me is if, you know, I, I'm going to support this as one, I think we can redeploy the asset later, so it's not a full cost. And two, we'll get some learnings. It'll be interesting to me to see once Normandy opens up, is it, everyone just ignore the flashing light and everything and we just have J-Walk City, uh, or not? I do have, the only, the only, um, trepidation that I do have is the science on whether or not, um, these, um, uh, flashing lights, uh, are, are safer or not safer. I think it's a very interesting hypothesis. I think there's probably data that can support either way. You know, an overconfident pedestrian, uh, could lead to, you know, a, a bad situation, but also, you know, vice versa, flashing light could lead to somebody stopping. I think, you know, I wish the data was way more conclusive, but it, but it's not. Um, so, um, that's the only thing that, that I think, uh, I wish that debate would be solved, it would help us out, uh, in the future, I think. I see Commissioner Douglas and then Commissioner Perush.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and support the motion, um, only because, I mean, if we're, if we pride ourselves on being a walkable city, even a small effort like this to improve walkability isn't an asset. I just don't think it's, I mean, I, I, you know, I'm like 5149 on this. I kind of don't think it's the right technology in the right location to accomplish what we want to accomplish, but it's marginal.
Commissioner Perush.
Yeah, I was going to say pretty much the same thing, that this is kind of a marginal thing and things are going to change a lot over the next two years. And then, and the road's going to be under construction. So we'll have a lot more data a year from now. The other new variable is that not all of the houses in the Robertson development are, are fully constructed yet and occupied. You see a lot of structures, but they're not all occupied. And so the traffic patterns in and out of that development, which is quite large, are going to change radically also over the next, course of the next year as all of those residences in there get occupied. Um, and they, and they use Normandy as a egress and ingress point. Obviously they can come in and out of Delamere, but they're also going to be using Normandy an awful lot, especially down at the end toward the park. So we'll have that data as well a year from now, which will also add to the mix of things that we consider as to what the, the best long-term solution is.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote, we'll go with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Mr. Colo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, I think that just leaves the, uh, no outlet sign, 6B. Commissioner Douglas.
I'm going to move that we, um, uh, allow the, or vote to, um, uh, call for the removal of the no outlet sign at 529 Florence.
The motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion.
I think I've said my say on this.
Mr. Macy.
Ditto what you said last time, I'm like 5149.
Commissioner Dubac.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty close down the fence on this one, and given that, I'm going to go ahead and back the recommendation of the traffic committee and the engineer. So I'll be voting no on the motion.
Anybody else? All right, I'm going to call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Dubac.
No.
Mr. Colo.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Perush.
No.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it's three to three, right? No.
How did you vote, Mayor, for you?
We had, uh, the no's, we had Commissioner Perush, Commissioner Dubac. No, actually, we had, it was, okay, I was wrong, four to two. My mistake, I counted wrong.
Did you miscount your vote?
I, I don't know, I don't know what's happening.
Your vote counts, Mayor, I want you to know your vote counts.
I feel like I've never, we've never talked longer about a sign coming in and out of a piece of property for two residential units on a hundred-foot street, which doesn't mean that it's not a serious issue or whatever, it's just, um, seems like it's, uh, something we can, you know, government can always find a way to overcomplicate things, and I think we achieved that tonight. But, uh, with, like you guys, I'm, I'm kind of 50, 49, 51. Uh, we can always put the sign back in if we need to. All right, uh, Commissioner Colo.
Yeah, I can just say really quick, there was a, met your public comment about the, uh, the streaming of the traffic meeting. I had actually had the staff brothers, because I had tried to watch the traffic meeting and it wasn't recorded, it was an accident. You know, our staff is really doing a great job keeping the city running right now during COVID, recording all the meetings and making sure that they're broadcast. This one seems to have, it was streamed live, it was available, it complied with the OMA. Unfortunately, it just wasn't preserved, uh, the record button wasn't done. Um, it was, it's a new system for the committee and, uh, you know, it, it's, uh, so I just wanted to, once again, thank city staff for keeping us moving forward, to keep us functioning during, uh, COVID. Thanks to Senator McMaro, who was here to talk about, you know, keeping that technology going and, you know, how, how the, the state's trying to give us relief too. Um, and I, um, I'm sad about the, you know, there's no nefarious effort going on. So, you know, uh, thank you to staff.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate staff and, you know, things happen. You know, we're compliant livestream, just like it would have been traditionally pre-COVID. If you showed up to the meeting, you could see what happened. If you didn't, there was no, you know, other than the meeting minutes, there was no, uh, video record. Uh, we've become accustomed to recording these and it was missed and, and, but however, it was available livestream for people who wanted to see it. So, um, uh, you know, you live, you learn and you do better. Okay, um, this brings us to item 12, which is request one-time only refund 2021 Class C liquor license fees and partially rebate already paid 2021 Class C liquor license fees.
Okay, uh, good evening, Mayor Fournieri and, uh, the city commission presenting this recommendation coming from staff. We are in the process of collecting the fee to inspect the current on-premise, uh, Class C liquor license. This extends from a period of April 1 to, uh, the end of March. So the, the process has begun right now in consideration of, of what the impact is to local businesses and specifically these restaurants, uh, in light of the, the closure over the last three weeks. As Senator McMaro, uh, mentioned, that the governor announced today, uh, that the closure will extend for, in dining for another 12 days, I would say at a minimum, and probably be reevaluated. So in consideration of that, uh, there has been some feedback since the, um, the fee renewal has been mailed out to these establishments, has asked consideration if we would consider a reduction. So the fee was established to recoup the, the costs associated with the staff time to inspect, um, and, and reimburse our time. It, it's a small gesture to reduce that fee. There's 40-plus establishments that are required to, uh, send in the $1,000 fee in addition to the application. So far to date, about nine have submitted, uh, the, the fee, it's not due until the end of January, uh, but we're bringing forth this recommendation that on this one time only, um, uh, hopefully we're not having the same conversation this time next year, but a one-time reducing the fee from $1,000 to 700, or excuse me, 1,000 down to 250, so a reduction of $750. So that's presented for your consideration and, and recommendation for approval.
Any questions for Mr. Bray? So I'd appreciate, um, you know, putting this on the agenda tonight, certainly the hospitality industry in our town is, um, is key and it's, uh, it's been struggling frankly and, and, um, you know, I think, uh, the, having some sort of gesture is appropriate, uh, as well as, I mean, for some, some of these businesses, you know, every penny counts for surviving another week or another day. As well as, I mean, for some, some of these businesses, you know, every penny counts for surviving another week or another day or another moment. So. You know, it's important and in the city's interest to make sure that we, we keep a strong, healthy, vibrant restaurant and hospitality. Community alive. Any questions, any motions, Commissioner Perush?
Only approval of this recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Prosh, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac? Discussion? Commissioner Perush.
Um, as Mr. Brake says, this may be in the whole scheme of things is a small gesture, but. I, I really think every little bit helps these days. So I commend the staff for bringing this forward. I think it's an appropriate thing to do. I wish we could do a whole lot more than what we're doing, but. We all want to do that. So thanks again to the staff for bringing this forward and. It's a good gesture, definitely for sure.
Anybody else? All right, well, call for the vote, Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Perush. Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dubac.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, thank you, Mr. Bray. All right. This brings us to. Item thirteen, which is considerations for implementation of COVID nineteen rapid test program. I see Mr. Murphy has joined us again.
Good evening. At your November ninth meeting, the City Commission had unanimously approved. Allocating some additional funding that we received from our, for our community development block grant program from the enactment of the CARES Act. The City Commission allocated those funds to three previously approved activities. One being the ability to provide up to six months of free food for residents in need of free food. Up to six months of hotel vouchers and food for residents that may have unfortunately found themselves homeless due to the recent circumstances. And third, up to six months of rental assistance to pay back rent so that individuals can stay in their existing rental dwelling. The City Commission did also have a conversation with regard to possibly allocating some funding for COVID nineteen rapid testing. There was a request for staff to. Delay the implementation of the approved activities to allow courtesy, a timeframe. For any group that wanted to come forward to implement a testing program. To come forward and have conversation with the city and submit an application or request for funds. To date, we have not received any such, any such application. On November eighteenth, staff, Commissioner Colo and Director of the Chamber of Commerce. Had a virtual meeting with some representatives from Beaumont Health with regard to their ability to potentially assist the city in implementing. A rapid testing program. The conversation went very well and they were interested in providing the city with a. Price proposal and a summary of how that type of program would occur. They did ask for the City Commission to establish some parameters if the City Commission decides to or elects to. Allocate some funding toward that opportunity. So we're here tonight to discuss. Whether the City Commission does have any interest in operating such a program and what those parameters may be. So that we can respond back to Beaumont Health and receive. Proposal from them for your, for consideration in the future.
Questions for Mr. Murphy or any ideas? Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Murphy. So this idea is something in that. I've been pretty excited about over the last month. Mr. Murphy and Mr. Brake have both been really great about working with Beaumont Health. And finding how we can find a partnership on this. A little bit backstory here. This started as a casual conversation. With the Restaurant Association about how maybe we can help them rapid test their employees. We have restaurants right now who are currently funding that out of pocket. We can all, anyone of us can go get a PCR test from the county, from your doctor today. And that is covered by federal funds. That is a hundred percent covered with or without insurance. You send it in. I know I've had three of them and the average wait time has been about nine days. My first one took seventeen days back in the summer. I mean, I was out of my quarantine. By the time I found out I was actually negative. You know, and it is greatly improved since then, but we're still at a multiple day wait. If you look at the, there's a website, the Michigan Health Central Association, it is something like over five days for a result right now. The problem with that is if you're positive, you're not going to know for those five days. A rapid test will, it's been described as like a pregnancy test. If you're negative, you might still be pregnant, but if you're positive, you're definitely pregnant. And, and that is a benefit of conducting a rapid test is to let someone who's positive, who's definitely positive, know right away that they are in fact positive. And they're not waiting for the five to seven to eight, you know, who long, however long it's going to take. So that's, that's where the conversation started with Beaumont Health and then the Chamber of Commerce also got in. At one point they were willing to administer the program and then Beaumont came along. And, you know, Beaumont is willing to bill us for the test. So we can send low income individuals. They don't have to be restaurant employees. They don't have to be businesses. We're sending low income residents. These are people who do not have insurance, because insurance will cover a rapid test. So someone who does not have insurance. And is low income will become eligible for this. So I think it's a good community benefit to be able to send people to find out. And even if it's just a small fraction of people finding out a little bit sooner that they have COVID. That increases the likelihood that someone's going to go home and stay safe while they wait the results of their other test. So Beaumont's willing to bill us directly. There is no out-of-pocket expenses. That's an issue we had with the Chamber and the Restaurant Association. They were not able to fund, essentially someone had to fund the project, someone had to pay for the test. And then we would use the COVID money to pay them back. We can pay, Beaumont will bill us directly. And they will administer the program. We can create a questionnaire to make sure that there's eligibility. So we're not, so we're testing all the right people. So, you know, I, I'm excited for the, this opportunity and I think we could maybe set some parameters here, but I'd like to see. We have something four hundred eighty thousand dollars in allocations that we could send to this. Maybe do a pilot program, see how it goes for the first month and see if it's the right use of funds.
Mr. Colo, so in your discussions and Mr. Murphy, how do you determine if somebody's low income? Like you're, you're exposed, this is all about speed. I imagine they're going to fill out, you know, a bunch of forms and send your tax return in, in order to get a rapid test.
Yeah, and I, I'd love Mr. Murphy to speak to that more precisely, except this is, it's self-reported. These, these results are self-reported. It's, it's not, my understanding is that there is not a verification requirement.
Okay, so it's the honor system.
Correct.
Someone would, would stealth certify. They would certainly have that fine print, which says that they attest under penalty of federal law. That they're telling the truth and.
Right.
We have audits yearly and we do have audits from our independent auditor yearly. And we do have audits from the federal government periodically. They would randomly pull one of those files and if that individual has a contact phone number or email address or even street address. We've gone to people's homes unannounced, showed up with a federal auditor and have them provide documentation to prove it. So someone would need to provide that, that can all be collected electronically.
Okay, but it's an audit process and, you know, you say the honor system, but it's like, hey, you know, it's verified, but you know, if you're, if you're fibbing. Then, you know, be warned, you know, you upfront, like you could, you know, suffer some consequence. Okay, so, so, I mean, and, and part of this too is like Commissioner, Commissioner Colo's part, I mean, even if five percent of the people. Don't tell the, the truth or have some issues, okay, but ninety-five percent of them are following it right. We have more information. They get to know that, you know, they don't show up to work at a restaurant or something like that. And, you know, we're all safer because of it. So. You know, we can't afford to give everybody in the community a rapid test, but those who. You know, need it and those who can't afford it, you know, we can help them out. And between the people that do have insurance and can afford it and their employers pay for it and all that. You know, we can double up on hopefully the tests we're getting and, and, you know, until we bridge, it's not, it's not forever hopefully, but until we can get these vaccines ramped up. It might be a good use of money, especially in the spring, you know, as we start to get closer to the little bit warmer days. You know, if it helps our restaurants, for example, or it helps our retailers, keep infected people out of the system. I mean, that, that's, that's good for everyone. Mr. Colo.
Yeah, and those are all great points, Mr. Mayor. And I'll just add too that. This funding, this type of program, as far as I can tell, does not exist in the county. It doesn't exist in the state. We'd be kind of pioneering. Using federal funds for this, as far as I can tell. So while some other programs that we would potentially use this money for instead, food distribution, et cetera, those are duplicated programs at the county at federal level. This is, we're kind of niching out a program that is unique to us and can really pilot it and see if this is going to work.
Good. Anybody else? Commissioner Macy.
So we, we got some correspondence from the Restaurant Association, some of the members about this possibility. I just wondered if Mr. Colo could, Commissioner Colo could talk about how Beaumont would work with them or like what the. What the mechanism is to get those restaurant workers tested, like would. Do we put flyers at their job? Would the restaurants work directly with Beaumont? How would that work?
So, Miss, I mean, Commissioner Macy, I would just point out quickly that it is a, while this started as restaurants, it is. If you live or work in rural, so it's employees and it's residents. So it's, it's that. But, but if we're talking about employees, restaurant employees, I, I think Mr. Murphy can maybe answer this. I mean, it will get out to the Restaurant Association that this is available. Like I said, right now, they're paying for it. They're, you know, we saw Gus Lane Alley. That they've been closed for an extended period of time, but they've already spent five hundred dollars in COVID tests and rapid tests this year. So I, I'm sure it'd be a communication uplifts that we put out. It's a cooperation. But I, I'm not, you know, Mr. Murphy might be able to answer that a little bit better.
We would have to work to determine the best ways to distribute the notice. I, I haven't provided any definitive thought to that process. I wanted to first see if the commission wants to pursue the program. As a group, it would be wonderful to have a consensus on. The, the parameters established, if it's going to be just for a modest income residence, or if it will also be offered to modest income. People who work in the city. If you want to target a particular employment sector or anyone that works in the city. Then we'll, and, and an established dollar amount as well, so that we can. As staff go back to Beaumont Health and provide them with those parameters and that potential dollar amount. So that they can provide a proposal for your future review. Implementation strategies, I think those are, we'll, we'll work on those and figure those out a little bit further on down, but. The items that I just referenced are critical to getting something from Beaumont for you to react to and potentially enter into contract. And for staff to also work on all of the, shall we say, federal paperwork in order to allocate the funds. And get federal government's approval.
Well, it'd be interesting, Mr. Murphy too, and I don't know if, if, if this comment over complicates things, but. You know. How much you have, how much the test costs, how many people are going to take you up on it? I mean, you burn through the cash in one day or one week or one month. You know, certainly with, if you don't have insurance or you're lower income, you're, there's probably zero chance you're going to go get a test, which, which is tough. And then maybe for the people that are modest or middle or even upper income. You know, it'd be great if there's like a sliding scale, like, hey, you know, Beaumont will do this at a, not a discounted price, but you know, at a, at a price that is under the program. And maybe if you're, you know, the average person that doesn't qualify, you still get, you know, fifty bucks off or something like that. And, and, you know, we don't pay for the whole thing, but we, we compensate a little bit of it if, you know, the math works out. But I mean, the first target would be is we wouldn't want to leave any low income and uninsured people. Without the ability to get tested or the incentive to get tested, but there, to the extent that there's some funding left over after that, that'd be interesting to see if it could be applied. As a, you know, a discount, so to speak, or a voucher or something like that. Commissioner Macy.
I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy, can't we not do that? Because doesn't all, don't all the funds have to be earmarked for low, the people who qualify in the low income categories? Like I don't, yes or no?
I believe what the mayor was alluding to was that if. Correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, that, that if Beaumont would provide us with a proposal for essentially a discounted. Price for individuals that didn't qualify for this pool of funds. Their Beaumont, Beaumont did. Inquire in our conversation, is the city also interested in funding rapid testing for individuals that wouldn't qualify for this program? And is there an opportunity for the City Commission to set aside money to do that? And we had simply indicated that. That wasn't probably something that the City Commission was interested in, seeing as though many individuals, as you had stated correctly, can, can. Qualify for getting free or discounted rate through their insurance. So we did pass on the word to them that, no, we really want to focus this and tailor this program associated with more modest income individuals.
That's true. Probably most of them have. It'd be just one more thing to manage, even though most people probably have it with their employer, their insurance at, at moderate and upper levels. But yeah, I mean, and to the extent that we can, you know, I mean, if, if the funds don't get used up. Then, you know, because not enough people are doing it, then we have to think about, you know, a better strategy as well and how to get more people in or whatever. But I think, I mean, it's virtually, if you don't have insurance and you can't afford it, very few people are getting these tests because they just don't have the economic means. They want to, they want to, you know, and a lot of them are in jobs that, you know, are on the front lines too, you know what I mean? And so they're interacting with people, they're working in restaurants, they're, you know, checking out people at the grocery store or stores. They don't make high income and which, you know, puts them at even more risk of exposure. So I like the idea. I don't think it hurts to shoot and see what happens. You know, there are no rules. There are no playbooks, there are no guidelines out there. We're, we're trying to figure this out and, and why not us? You know, why, I mean, time is of the essence. At some point in battling this virus, you got to make a decision to take the hill, even though you don't have all the information. And through these, winning these battles will win the war. So it's, it's worth a shot. Not every shot's going to be successful, but I think it's definitely, I appreciate and applaud Mr. Murphy and Mr. Colo. And the team at Beaumont and the Restaurant Association. I think it's a great idea, but, you know, you're what my colleagues had to say. Mr. Colo.
Mr. Murphy, just hearing how the comments are going so far today, what, what would you need from us now? What, what are the next steps that we get to take?
It, it sounds as though there's no objection to offering the program to. Any modest income individual that either resides in the city or works in the city. Doesn't seem as though there's any objection to, to those two parameters. I, I would like to take back to Beaumont. A general dollar amount that you're interested in entertaining from them, because that will certainly. Play into how they respond with a proposal for you to consider. So a, a general dollar amount would be, would be appropriate to provide them the indication that you're interested in this certain range.
But the doubt, you had the dollar amount of those four hundred eighty some thousand inside our packet. Would that be as that funds that are available and we could pitch towards this and then reallocate if needed?
Yes, you already did allocate those funds. So, so you did want to. We haven't executed an addendum to the contracts we have with the two social service agencies to allocate those funds. We, we would pause and hold that until we got a proposal from Beaumont. If, if you want them to consider that full dollar amount, that's certainly appropriate. They can provide a proposal that highlights how they'd be able to operate a program. Costs essentially breaking down to a cost per test and giving that, that a dollar threshold as a maximum. And they may have some suggestions of, of anything less than that, what they think is appropriate, but. If, if that's the case, then, then you can certainly in the future entertain a motion to rescind. The previous one that was, was approved in November, the November ninth meeting. And then you can. Entertain a series of motions to enter into contract with Beaumont for a certain dollar threshold. And also modify the CDBG budget for that particular dollar threshold. So if you want to. Indicate to Beaumont at this point, time that that's the maximum and what are they able to work, what are they able to propose within that dollar amount? That's entirely appropriate.
Commissioner Douglas?
So are we saying that we have no idea what a rapid test costs? Like,
That is correct.
$5, $500. Nobody knows how much a rapid test costs?
No, we have not been able to obtain that information, and Beaumont was unwilling to provide that in the conversation at that point.
Anybody Google it?
So I think, I'm sorry, I, so it costs anywhere between $100 and about $200. The unknown cost is right, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Murphy, the big unknown cost is the project, the program management of this. Like, we know what the test is going to be, that that test cost is there. It's the program management of how much Beaumont's going to charge us. I can't see that they're going to charge us 100% value of the test. I mean, let's, doing math here, it's probably going to be some value of the test.
Commissioner Bruce?
I was just going to say that it's so hard to pin down the cost of the test because there are so many variables. Depending upon which labs they choose to use at any point in time, and that can shift on a daily basis, that can shift on a weekly basis, depending upon the situation. Just because that's how it is. And it also has a lot to do with actual test administration and what that, what that is and what those costs are. And that can change, depending upon staff levels and staff shortages and so on and so forth. There's so many moving parts to this. That it's very, very, very hard to pin down a specific number. And Beaumont, if they provide us with a number, knows that, and they're just going to have to, you know, shoot a dart at the wall and take their best guess as to what those test costs are going to be, because they know that they're going to be shifting over time as well. So, I mean, we can kind of take a guess, but that's, that's really what it is. And it's a wild guess as of, you know, 10 o'clock tonight on Monday night, and it could change a whole lot in 24 hours. So it's, I think getting a proposal from Beaumont is our best step right now. And they will flesh it out as best they can, and they will put contingencies in it, and they will put qualifications in it. But, but I think getting more, something more specific from them is probably our best next step.
With Commissioner Macy?
So the 400,000 amount is amount that we've allocated to continue to support the food banks and the rental utility assistance. I guess I would be hesitant to suggest to Beaumont that we're going to wipe those out and just possibly give them all the money for rapid testing. Does anyone else feel that way?
Mr. Brake wants to chime in here.
Yeah, I would say that what, what we're looking for is an approximate percentage out of that, because you are correct, Commissioner Macy. Whatever we allocate into this program will have to reduce, which you voted on previously. So that's offsetting that. So, you know, and that's part of the parameters that we need, if you say, all right, we're going to allocate a half or a quarter towards that. And realize, again, going back to the comments that Commissioner Bruce said, there will be administrative overhead costs that may come back where it's cost prohibitive. Because there's a lot of record keeping that's associated with this. As Director Murphy suggested originally, if there was some other entity that would be willing to undertake this endeavor, there's a lot of paperwork that's associated with it. It's not anything that we can do, because, you know, you get into the, the, the whole discussion about HIPAA, so it's not anything that we can directly administer and to hold those records. So it makes sense that Beaumont does that. But to meet that threshold of accountability of the federal oversight, what may be, you know, for the average person, $100 test, you could be looking at anywhere from, who knows, $150 to $200 because of the administrative, you know, record keeping and retention and associated that goes along with that. I'm not trying to talk you out of it, but, but realize that in the grand scheme of things, we don't really have that large of a pool of money. And so you're going to be reducing those the, the rent assistance and the assistance to the, you know, providing food to those who are unable to afford it.
Yeah, and, okay, go ahead, Commissioner Macy.
I guess my follow-up question to that is to Mr. Murphy, what's the, like, if we were doing this the fastest possible, what would be the soonest we could get this? Because I think it's possible that approximately six weeks from now, the federal government will take another look at doing this kind of work themselves. So I wonder if like doing a kind of a small chunk pilot program makes sense, and can we even get things underway in a pretty speedy manner or not?
We would have to convey what parameters we would want Beaumont to, to react to and provide us a proposal. But they certainly needed an appropriate timeframe to, to respond. And then staff needs to prepare that for the City Commission's consideration. Because there's federal funding involved, we were subject to operating under those federal guidelines, which require, even before it comes to you, to the City Commission, we have to public notice it within a certain number of days. And have fine details as to how we're going to spend it. If you then do enter into contract, which we would have to send the paperwork to the federal government for their release of the funds. And specific approval, we would have to highlight how we're going to spend these funds, and then have their written response to say they, that what you're proposing is in compliance, and then they give us a correspondence. That whole timeframe, generally speaking, probably takes two and a half, maybe three months. That's why we had noted in the City Commission letter that to get it back to you, probably your second meeting in January, then to pass it on to the federal government and receive their correspondence and official approval, probably another two to three weeks thereafter, before we could then actually execute the contract with utmost assurance with Beaumont and do a press release and start assisting individuals.
Okay, I think I understood you say earlier in the meeting that one suggestion you had is that we could proceed as normal, and then if we made an arrangement with Beaumont, we could do a modification. How can we do that if we're gonna, if we have contracts with those other social service agencies who are presumably going to release the money? Like, I'm interested in that plan, but I want to know how it works.
The city, the city did receive the initial round of CDBG funds from the CARES Act, and you took action several months ago to enter into contract with the two social service agencies at that dollar amount. At the November 9th meeting, you were notified that the city was going to receive an additional allocation of CDBG funds from the CARES Act. That's where you had recognized that you have three existing programs, two agencies to operate those programs on the city's behalf. So there was an action taken to take that, an additional round of funding and allocate it to existing contracts, existing activities. Then there was a pause, the request for the slight pause. So we haven't done an addendum to the existing contracts. We've notified those agencies that previously, previous action on November 9th. But we informed them that there's a little bit of a delay, because the City Commission is trying to determine whether to allocate funding for the rapid testing or not. So they're, they're aware of what's occurred and what currently is occurring and what you're considering. So they understand there's a pause.
Commissioner Dubb?
I think Mr. Murphy answered my question. I just want to make sure I'm completely understanding. These dollars, and I think we talked about it before. So they're not subject to the same timeframe as the other CARES Act dollars, which have to be out the door by December 31st?
No, these are not. We have up to six years from the, from, from receiving the funds, which is a very long time. We have very, we have a much longer timeframe in order to expend the funds. Certainly we want to take, as we have been taking every action as fast as possible to get the money into programs that assist the residents and let them know of these programs.
I remain committed to the, the investments from the previous direction, but I think this is a worthwhile addition. So I think the only question is, I guess it's hard to know how much to invest if we don't really know what the ultimate cost is. And so if we take away $100,000, that could have gone to food support or housing support, and that ends up getting us, you know, a couple hundred rapid tests, or wherever the worst case scenario is. It's hard to make a decision not knowing if that buys us a couple 10,000 or a couple hundred. So I'm not really sure how to move forward with that, that level of information, because I understand what we would be taking away from the rest of the pot. I just, I don't have a view to what we'll be gaining, even though I think the rapid testing is really important. But I would want to make, make sure that it's, the trade-off is worth it for the community.
Commissioner Colo?
So just a couple of points of clarification really quick, Mr. Murphy. So we've received a total of, I'm looking at the December, I'm sorry, November 9th meeting, we have a packet. We received almost a million dollars in CARES funding at that round one, two, and three accumulation total for this, right? Okay, so then we have, the number in our packet today is like 490,000. Is that what's remaining of all those funds? Is that what, so we've spent the rest already?
I won't say that it's remaining. It was the dollar amount that was the action that was taken at the November 9th meeting to, to do an addendum to the two existing service contracts. The total dollar amount for that addendum is that dollar that you had just referenced.
Okay, so we still have, we still have money going out to, and I don't care what final number we all land on. I'm just, no matter what, there's still money going out to these social services programs. We're not defunding social service programs. They're still going. We haven't hit the cap that we originally set in round two yet, right? Okay, I, I, I think that's important, because that, that kind of really changes the frame of a question. Man, I would abandon this if, if we're like adding housing assistance, if we're not adding housing assistance, because it's still available. Okay.
And I know, like Commissioner Dubb said, it is a trade-off, you know. And it would be good to know. We do, we do know that even one test can save lives, right? Because if these people know earlier and they're not exposed to 20 other people in their lives, and we want to take care of people because of the economic situation, we also want to do what we can to preserve life as well. It's sort of a tricky, tricky one, and to that extent. And I don't even know what would be interesting for Beaumont to start with this. I mean, if you said $1,000, they'd say no. But, you know, I think we need to make sure that we can take care of those in need, so we can't, can't allocate the whole pot. You know, maybe Commissioner Colo, you have some ideas?
Virtually reallocated, I'll say you all, because I wasn't here yet, 265,000 during round one of COVID to businesses, and maybe we can use that money, because we were told businesses weren't using it. So maybe that's a solid number that we could start with, and that leaves, you know, a lot of round three and two monies left over. So maybe that's a, a number that works.
Anybody else? Strongly object, Commissioner Macy?
Sounds good. Is that a motion, Commissioner Colo?
Commissioner Colo, I think you hit the freeze frame button.
It's a motion. If it, if it needs, I don't know, Mr. Brake, Mr. Murphy, well, tell me what you need from us now, and we'll be motion if you need it.
I don't believe that a formal motion is necessary. I think that's sufficient to, to go, to go to Beaumont and have a conversation with them, continue to have a conversation. I think that, I think that's sufficient.
Yeah, it's not 10 million and it's not 10,000. It's a number in that range that we want to get some additional information back on. Good.
I just want to say thank you again, Mr. Mayor, to both Mr. Brake and Mr. Murphy and Beaumont, and the chamber, and everyone who's worked on this. I mean, this is, it's come a long way in the last month, so thank you all for helping us. I think we can do a really good thing.
You're welcome. All right, anything else on this, Mr. Murphy? All right, thank you for your time again, sir. All right, this brings us to Ms. Donahue, the sidewalk improvement program. I know this happens to be Commissioner Dubb's favorite topic. So we're glad to have you here tonight, Ms. Donahue. Him is not, Holly, you might be on mute, sorry.
I am, I apologize. We just wanted to bring forward the sidewalk improvement program one more time. As you probably recall, last year we opted to, or you opted to delay the program until 2021. Assuming that a lot of residents would be facing financial hardships throughout 2020. And this program is, of course, a direct bill to the residents. So we postponed it till 2021. The contractor that we originally awarded it to has agreed to hold his prices for 2021, as long as we allow him to start the program a little bit later in the year, which I don't have any concerns with doing that. So in the commission letter, I had outlined how many properties we're talking about, what types of bills residents could expect to see, and kind of how residents would be informed about their potential bill, and when they actually would receive their, their bill and when it would be due. So I guess, I really just wanted to bring this forward to make sure there wasn't any objection from the commission to go ahead and move forward with this program in 2021. I will know, I reached out to the treasurer's office just to see if they had a feel for how residents were handling the pandemic. Did they see a lot more late charges, or people not paying bills on time, or not paying them at all? And they, they said it really doesn't seem to be any different at all. It's pretty much business as usual for them. You know, the normal amount of late, late fees, for example, that they would normally see in a year. So it kind of gave me a little bit of a good feeling that maybe things aren't quite as bad here in Royal Oak, and people will be able to handle this in 2021. But I know it is a sensitive topic, so I wanted to kind of get your blessing before moving forward here.
Any questions for Ms. Donahue? Mr. Macy?
It's, we've suspended this program for two years, right? Like, one year was just after the, I think 2019 was after that other previous program, and we were just like, let's take a breath. Is that correct, or am I wrong?
I honestly wasn't super involved at that time, but that, I believe you're correct. I think we
Okay, Commissioners, tell me, is that right? That's right, right? I think we helped, we didn't do it in 2019, because we're like, all right, everybody needs a break. Sidewalks are good. And then in 2020, we took a break because of the pandemic. So what's the, what's your sense of the state of our sidewalks? I'm in this block, as you may know, of sidewalks that will be addressed in this year.
Sure. I mean, I think they're in pretty decent condition compared to where we were when we first started this program in 2012. I want to say in 2012, most properties were paying some sort of bill, or I think back then it might have been an assessment. Most properties were affected. This time around, 57% of the properties don't have any work proposed. So I think we made a huge dent back in 2012. But, you know, things will always deteriorate, so some of them have come up now, and it's, it's time to replace them.
Commissioner Macy?
So, you know, some of the, we've had many concerns about the sidewalk and complaints about the sidewalk in the past, but one of them that's come up several times is about the quality of the replaced flags. Can you talk a little bit about what that will look like in this upcoming program?
Sure, yeah. So every program that we have, we have a warranty period, and I know, I think it was the 2017 program. It seemed like we had a few bad batches of concrete. We saw a lot of scaling the year afterward, and those had to be replaced under warranty by the contractor. So if there is like a issue with the mix itself, that usually will present itself within that first year. If there's bad backfilling, it'll crack over that winter. So we usually are able to catch most of that. I asked my inspector, who's the project manager, if he, like, kept track of how many 2012 flags are getting replaced again now, eight years later, nine years later. And he didn't have an exact list. His thought was, there weren't many. If he was replacing them, it was usually where a tree used to be, and we had a curved walk. Now that tree is gone, and we have to do a straight walk. He said that there were a few cracked flags over the years from 2012 new concrete. And then he said, you know, sometimes we'll see it, just people salting their, their brand new concrete. You put salt on it, it eats away at that surface. So nine years later, it's probably ready to be replaced again, unfortunately. But his general gist was like, that that product has held up over the years. We're not replacing a lot of the stuff that we did in 2012.
My other memory about this is in 2019, when we were discussing whether or not we're going to go forward. This commission was asking the city engineer to look at, you know, how, how bad do the flags have to be to be replaced? If I remember correctly, I think we made some modifications, so that it was, that fewer flags overall would be replaced under the new criteria. I mean, I get that you're saying that they're not as bad, because we did the sidewalk program eight years ago, but do you think that's also part of the calculation, is that we're not, we're looking more seriously at the, at the troublesome flags, rather than getting all the ones that we think might be able to be replaced? we're looking more seriously at the, at the troublesome flags rather than getting all the ones that we think might be able to be replaced?
I don't really have a great answer for that. You know, I think we, we changed the trip elevation, it used to be a half inch and now it's one inch. And, and so now that's only 8% of our program overall. So I could see if we kept the more stringent criteria, there being more flags to replace. I, I really don't have a good answer for you on that though, what, what it would be if you had a different criteria.
No worries. And it, I mean, it looks like, I mean, I think I got 91% of the houses were assessed, assessed at under $500. And I just, and we have a program in place that that can go out over six years. So as I recently revealed to City Commission, I had a spectacular fall on the sidewalk a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago, while out jogging, that I hope was not captured by anyone neighbor's video. And I, when I've been telling that story since, almost every time I've told it, someone's like, oh yeah, me too. So I mean, I think our sidewalks are in pretty good shape, but I've started to notice like, it looks like Commissioner Douglas is saying, me too. I have started to notice and the thing is, we're out there walking all the time. So I've had some people talk to me about, you know, this is the pandemic, is this the time to be spending this money? I think even a pandemic, we need to be spending time to maintain the infrastructure that people are using, especially during the pandemic. And sidewalks is a key one of those. I happen to be in the 9%, that's over $500, just by a little bit. But I live on a corner and I knew it was coming and I'd be glad to have that sidewalk be safe and walkable. So I commend you for bringing this to us, probably took a little bit of courage. And I do think it's time to get back to the sidewalk program.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Macy. Yeah, and I kind of agree. I mean, you know, we do have a mechanism to deal with the financial hardship that people have to bear. We also put this to voters back in the day to say, you know, is this something you want to come out of a general fund type issue where we have a millage to replace these? Or do you want to continue to pay for these out of your, you know, own property assessment? And the voters chose to be assessed for this. The sidewalks don't care that there's a pandemic, the sidewalks don't care that there's financial hardship. Commissioner Macy's knee doesn't care. You know, other folks that may struggle a little bit on the sidewalk. So I, I, I think, you know, it's not going to get done till 2020, 2021. You know, we'll be out of this hopefully mid to late next year. You know, things will start to rebound a little bit for, for people. And if they don't, you know, we have the, the mechanisms in the treasury to help them with, you know, financial hardship if, if they need be. So I just, I know with this stuff, if it's like the roads, you delay it a little longer, people, you know, things get out of whack and you can have lawsuits and then on top of it, you know, it just deteriorates even more, you know, the, the sidewalk. So I just think it's probably, and we pushed it off a couple of years. And then people get even bigger bills, you know, which is even more of an issue every, because more flags are likely to, to go bad. So at least we can spread it out by doing it. Commissioner Macy?
I have the other thing I was going to ask about, can we change the 3% interest rate on it?
I believe so, that was an estimate from our finance director. We can charge up to 6%. She had just looked at kind of where we were at with like the money that we had in the bank, what we were earning on that. And she said before the pandemic, around 3% was a really safe, good number. She's like, right now, everything has dipped really, really low. So that really was at the estimate to give people an idea of what we're talking about in terms of what you could expect. I don't know, does that answer your question?
I, I think it does, but who sets it? Who sets that rate? Does Ms. Rudd set it? Do we?
I think it's the finance, I always ask the finance director whether she sets it or gets it elsewhere, I'm not totally sure.
Commissioner Douglas?
Well, yeah, it used to be much higher. I think it was 6% and we as a commission pressed to lower it to the current 3%. But I think I did see Mr. Break raise his hand here, he may have better information.
In, in my opinion, this is a policy issue. So if that's something that, you know, given that, you know, today's bank interest rates and a certificate of deposit are, are pretty insignificant. And so there's no indication of, of interest rates rising. So I would say to make this palatable, of relying on this 3% figure. But it's just, you know, I've, I've verified that, but it's just that, again, in my opinion, to make this program palatable, that, that's more of a policy issue.
Yeah, and I would argue that going from three to two and a half or to two, I mean, we have administration costs of doing the, part of that isn't just what the interest rates are in the bank. I mean, we have, we have to manage these notes. It's, it's kind of a pain for the finance department to do it. You have default rates, you have, you know, so it's not just, you know, what we're earning on a checking account. There are other costs associated when you extend credit. Commissioner Dubuck?
Um, yeah, Commissioner Douglas is remembering correctly, we, we did press on this issue, made it clear that we wanted the rates set at a, a place where, you know, we were not growing the money in the program, but just covering costs and making sure that we were minimizing cost to residents and that, you know, being able to finance it as a service that we're offering, make it more palatable for people. But, um, yeah, the rate should be no higher than it needs to be for us to make, keep the program. So it should be something we revisit regularly and we can take the advice of the manager and finance director on what it's going to be for us to keep the program solvent and we're not losing dollars by, by financing.
So the question is, do we move forward with the sidewalk program? The other way to keep the cost down too, and I, and I think it was Donna Hughes right on this and I think the contractor is right on this. I mean, we get to preserve the costs that we had in 2020. And as we've seen in almost every year, concrete has gone up 3%, you know? And, you know, they're still working on, on projects all around the area, road construction, bridge construction and all of that. So I don't necessarily see, I mean, I'm not a genius here, maybe a magic eight ball at best. But, you know, I don't see, I see the price of concrete being more impactful. You know what I mean? Then, then we think so, you know, it might make sense to, to do it. We have the financing option 3%, whether it goes down to two or four or whatever. I think it's a very good interest rate for people because it's more about the payments than it is the interest. And so, yeah, I, I, I think, be interested to hear you guys have to think about moving forward with it or not. Commissioner Collo?
Uh, I'm sorry, I just want to talk about the interest again for one more quick second. If we do choose to change that percentage rate, is that an action that we could take at a different time and not tonight? So more research can go into this?
Any, anytime someone enters into a financial agreement with us, I mean, they, we would have, I mean, this won't even be done till next year. So, you know, at that time, someone will have a, let's say you live in a corner lot and you got a $600 bill, $1,000 bill or something like that because you had some real big damage. You know, they would come then and, but by that time we would have, you know, we'd have that policy decided. We've got a lot of options, haven't we? We don't have to, we don't have to tie it to whether or not we do the sidewalk program or not. It's just a consideration. If, 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 if a consideration of not doing it is because it might hurt somebody's pocketbook really badly, at least we know that there's an affordable payment plan out there for folks. If they find themselves in a bit of a tougher situation, I think that's really the part of the financing. Other than that, consideration, it's, do we move forward with the sidewalk program? And it's two years behind. We know, we all endured the ones that were elected in 2012. You know, we had years and years and years of not doing it and then we weren't really sure what we were voting for, I guess. Like one of our first meetings and it became the topic of six, every, every six years. I mean, from notifications to, you know, you name it. It was a, it was a thing and I think the more you put it off, the more it's going to, you know, people don't recognize when they don't get a bill. They recognize when you wait 12 years and then they get a bill double the size that they're not expecting. Because, you know, the life expectancy of concrete is limited. Commissioner Macy?
You raise a good point there. Ms. Donahue, how many new sidewalks are we talking about? Let's talk about the new sidewalks in this program.
So that's something we'll, we'll bring to the commission in the spring with recommendations. I, I think it was only one or possibly two blocks of new sidewalk. To be considered, I, I don't know what they are off the top of my head, we only briefly discussed them.
Yeah, and we went through that over the last, since 2012. So if there's something that's really changed, you know, we could consider installing them. But I mean, we went, that, that was a arduous process. So hopefully that's been done for the most part and wouldn't be, I mean, notwithstanding an unusual circumstance, wouldn't, I wouldn't see it changing much. All right, so we got, this Holly Donahue is looking for a little feedback here. Commissioner Prush?
I agree with everyone else, but I think we need to proceed with it for all the reasons that already have been articulated. Do you need a motion for this or without any strong objections, you're just going to proceed?
Right, I, I already have an approved contract and you already directed me to move forward in 2021. So I'm just making sure there are no changes to that. If you're good, you can just move on.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so are there any motions to squash this? All right, the floor has been offered up and it's been turned away. So therefore I think we're good with the original decision here, Ms. Donahue. And thank you for checking in, really appreciate it. It's a good opportunity before we start these things to refresh ourselves. So when there's questions, we, we have a basis to start from. It's been a couple of years, thank you. All right, we already did number 15, so we are on 16 authorization filed suit, housing rehabilitation, mortgage. Who's going to handle this? Is this going to be, I don't see Mr. Twing, but is it Mr. Break? Ms. McLaughlin? Oh, Murphy's back.
Sorry. This item was discussed in closed session. I don't have anything further to add. There is a suggested motion. If the commission would like to discuss it and discuss the topic and consider the motion or some modification to the suggestion motion, would be happy to, to engage in conversation.
Questions for Mr. Murphy, motions, Commissioner Macy?
I, I guess I'm a little confused on how to proceed here because we got some answers to questions in closed session. Can I now say what those were? And like that impacts how I feel about this resolution and how I'm planning to vote on it. Somebody give me some direction? Or do I re-ask those questions again?
Perhaps Ms. McLaughlin can, can weigh in in terms of what would be appropriate and what might not be.
Um, you can discuss the proposed motion without divulging any attorney client communications that were made in the closed session. The, obviously, the, the agenda describes what the proposed, proposed activity is. So that in and of itself is not privileged. But if you have other comments to make or discussion to have, you know, you, obviously you must do it on the public record. If you're deliberating towards a decision that you intend to make now.
So things of timing and, you know, things of that can be discussed.
Yes.
The motion, but specifics to what we discussed in, you know, the details and obviously private details and things like that, we would not be able to discuss, so.
Correct.
So the, so the timing is what I'm getting at.
Yes, of course, you can talk about that.
At the time and in the communications that were, that were, that came from city?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's my understanding that in this matter, it's that there has been one letter received from the city after the city was notified of this change in hands of the, of the property. And there was no response to that letter and we are at this point planning to proceed with foreclosure suit as a means to get a response. That's the idea is to get a response. This is typical operating procedure, this is how the city handles all of these. If we have some kind of a conveyance like this and then there's no response from them, when we had a lien on the property with these federal funds, they don't respond, we need to recover the money, we file suit. If they don't respond to us to make an arrangement, we file suit and proceed from there. I think what has, was raised, I think, previous time and also in closed session was concern about this being in the middle of a pandemic and the impact of foreclosure. And I feel like we were well reassured that in the vast majority of these cases, like most legal cases, it does not always, it doesn't go all the way to the end as proposed in the initial complaint. But there's usually some negotiation that happens and that's the idea here. I am concerned that this is not the time and there seems to be no particular urgency for this. And I also feel that there is an impact on this homeowner, this resident, this borrower, not in the criminal record, in case anyone was unclear on that, but in their credit report. And from here on out, there will be a lawsuit. And if you've ever replied to rent somewhere, you know that they will ask you this question. And so to put that on a resident without being sure that they are even aware of what's happening, I find very troublesome at all times and particularly in this time. So I would, I'm, I'm not going to make a motion on this resolution other than that we set it aside for some period of time and ask that the city staff make continued efforts to reach this resident before getting back to us.
If I may just address one issue that you raised, Commissioner. A lawsuit itself does not show up on someone's credit report. A judgment shows up on a credit report. That is what is usually judgments when someone is attempting to collect. I mean, you already have a lien, so the lien itself is a matter of public record and with the register of deeds. A judgment related to a property would then be, be, be made a public record and recorded with the register of deeds. But once it is, once there is a judgment. The point of filing the lawsuit is to avoid getting to that point so that the discussions can be had. But there is some pressure on the, the borrower to honor their obligation to the city, which, you know, was able to give them a loan, give her a loan with these federal funds at a significantly reduced rate or, or no interest rate whatsoever. I'm not sure of the exact particulars of the mortgage, but this is standard operating procedure as you indicated. And there's, this is pretty much the only leverage that we have at this point. Specifically because this property was transferred. That's, I mean, even though it was from a family member to another family member, the, that, that actually is, I think, even more of a reason because maybe they think that there's not going to be any enforcement. But, you know, and I understand if there, if you want to engage in a forbearance agreement, you can. But, but that has to come after the filing of the lawsuit and some contact by the resident. We can't just sit in limbo and not know what's going on with this property owner. Maybe we'll find out there is some hardship, maybe we'll find out somebody's ill. On the other hand, maybe it's just they thought that once they transferred the property, they didn't need to do anything anymore and, and the city would just kind of, you know, turn away and let it go. But we need to find out what that situation is and we need to know why this person hasn't responded to the letters that have been sent from both the city and from outside counsel. So it would be my, I, I would agree with the recommendation to file the suit.
So I want to clarify that a judgment for, will appear on a, a credit report for foreclosure action. Those do impact the credit report. I have worked with, I'm a legal aid attorney, I have worked with clients where it does appear.
Yes, a judgment, a judgment will appear, yes. But, but a lawsuit in and of itself will not.
For a mortgage matter, for a foreclosure, it can appear on the credit report.
For a lawsuit?
Yes.
I'm
I've, I've seen it.
Oh, well, I'm not, I'm Well, I'm not, I'm, I never have, so I guess I'm not familiar with that particular matter.
We'll go with Commissioner Colo, then Commissioner Perush.
So as I did at the last meeting, I share a lot of the same concerns with Commissioner Macy. I, I don't, you know, it's a, we're in a pandemic. However, we do have an obligation on these funds and there was a promissory note. I mean, there's a whole system here. I think a compromise I would want to see is, I would like to see one letter, one last letter from the city, one last letter from our attorney, outline the next steps that are going to happen. And a problem that we have is that we've not heard from this, this person. It's been radio silence. So I'm, I would be satisfied if we send one more letter from us, one more letter from the city. And on January 7th, we authorize, you know, give the lawyer authorization to proceed. That'd be my recommendation.
Commissioner Perush?
I think we need to remember that Mr. Dunn explained that when he sent his letter, he sent his letter with return requested, which means that someone actually signed for the letter. They knew what it was and they signed for the letter. It didn't get lost in the mail, it didn't get lost in the thousands of catalogs that we're all getting in our mailbox and all of the other junk mail that's coming. Someone actually signed the letter and recognized what it was from and they ignored it. And we obviously don't know what the circumstances are. And they could be some very significant circumstances that would impact this property owner's ability to pay back the loan. Who knows? If it is the granddaughter who's signing for the mail, that's an indication that there's something going on with the original lender or the eventual original lender. Where the granddaughter is handling certain matters for him. Excuse me. So I would a compromise that Commissioner Colo suggests, like waiting for one more certified letter to be sent by the attorney? I'd be willing to go that far, but other than that, I think we need to proceed with the lawsuit.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Perush. I mean, I think, you know, we don't know what the situation is because we haven't seen a response. I do know people are overwhelmed right now, you know, maybe as opposed to last year or years before, you know, situations are different and people are struggling, you know, in many different regards. Even managing and following paperwork and notices. I mean, you're trying to teach your kids at home, you're trying to, you know, do catechism and then, you know, take care of an aging parent or grandparent. I mean, things can get lost in the shovel and I, and I'll tell you 30 days just can just go that quick. So I don't have an issue. I think, I'll say it's, it's, I mean, we always love helping people out and issuing these loans. It's always a great thing to do to see people, you know, get the funding they need to rehabilitate their homes. Collecting is always the crappy part. Nobody likes to collect on those. That's not the fun part of our job at all, but we are stewards of the city's money and we are stewards of this program. And, you know, we have a responsibility to make sure that we're taking reasonable and responsible efforts to collect. As painful as it is and as painful as individual situations are, it's still our duty on behalf of the other 59,999 people that call this community home, that we do our job. I think what Commissioner Macy brings up is interesting. I mean, I think, I think if we go, you know, you know, take one more effort here to make sure we can connect with these individuals or individual or whatever the circumstances to get them, you know, notice, I don't think it hurts us. I don't think the amount's going to break the bank for us. And if they don't respond again, then I think, you know, I mean, if I was a betting man, I would say that, you know, you know, we might, probably, I mean, every situation's unique, but if they didn't listen to you once, they're probably not going to contact you twice, but a second time. But nonetheless, we should give it a shot. It's, it's not urgent. However, these things can get away. And we got to make sure we're also, for all the people that are paying their, their rehabilitation loans on time, even during these tough times. We want to make sure that, you know, we honor them as well by saying, you know, hey, we're not just giving a free ride to people that aren't taking the effort to make, to make the payments as tough as they are. So I think that it's a tricky situation and, you know, when, when you collect, because we want to help people out, but we also are financial stewards of the city. But I do think we can give another period of time to Commissioner Macy's point to make sure that we've figured out what the situation is. So we don't have to deal with the anxiety of a lawsuit or some filing. But if they don't, I like Commissioner Colo's idea, you know, we don't have to bring this back here for the amount, just say, hey, give it another, you know, give them to a certain date. And, you know, send out another letter, make a good effort, try to get a hold of them. And if they don't respond, then, you know, pull this trigger. Because after that, I mean, it's, you're not going to hear anything. I, I think it's an equal chance that somebody got sick and there's a problem. And there's also an equal chance that someone's trying to scam the system. We just don't know. Commissioner Macy?
Thank you, Mayor. That sounds good to me. I would wonder if we could also get a phone call as part of this? I mean, so these, these letters are, I'm sure they're, they're very clear, but they're confusing. They're confusing if you are not, if this is not your world. And I think it could be particularly confusing for someone who's the new owner of the home, like not even realizing that this lien exists possibly. So a phone call where someone can answer questions, I think it would be nice if we could make that a dual effort, like one letter and a phone call.
I, I think that's reasonable. Commissioner Dubat?
So I just want to be clear, we're talking about establishing a brand new policy around this entire process, not just changing the way that we're approaching this one particular case. You want to give staff direction on how to pursue these from now on?
I think they'd need more than one letter before they file an action, yes.
In all cases.
That's my opinion.
Commissioner Douglas?
Why does Commissioner Dubat conclude that, that, that we are changing policy and not not dealing with this on a case-by-case basis? What are the implications?
Well, that's what I'm, I'm trying to understand the, the direction that's being given because we have very little context about this particular incident. We only know that is the process that our staff and our representation have pursued every time that they almost never actually evict somebody. That generally when we get no response, once we take this step, we get a response and that's their experience multiple times over, as was explained to us. So my, based on what they're telling us, all we're saying is we're giving another four or five weeks for people to not respond and then we definitely do this again. And I just want to be clear that when we do that, that that will satisfy, that policy satisfies whatever the desire is, whatever we're trying to accomplish here. What I want to hear from our attorneys is that we get a response once we take this step. And that's why we do it. We don't do it to try and actually evict somebody, but to get the conversation going.
But I think what you're going to see, Commissioner Dubat, is that I don't think anybody has an issue with that in, you know, the normal times. I think that it might just be tied to the fact that there's a lot going on with the pandemic and that this is the one that popped up. That's just my guess. Commissioner Macy?
Actually, our attorney told us that his understanding was before the letter was sent, that many, many attempts had been made to reach this person in advance of sending the letter. And then we find out from the city staff that in fact, because of the way that this one took place, she had immediately forwarded it. So there might have been a breakdown in communication between city staff and the attorney in this case that normally wouldn't be an issue. So I think, I mean, I guess I don't think it's setting a policy that doesn't exist. I think this is the policy that in this case, in the handoff, got missed.
Good point. Commissioner Colo?
Hey, Commissioner Macy covered it. Thank you.
All right. We talked about it. We got a couple of options. We can take the recommendation. We can modify the recommendation. Any motions? Commissioner Colo?
I move. I move that we move forward with this recommendation after a period of one month. After a letter, certified letter has been sent along with a phone call by the city.
Motion by Commissioner Colo is our second. Second by Commissioner Macy, discussion. All right, I don't see any discussion. I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Dubat?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, all right. So, simple direction moving forward on that one. All right. So this brings us to approval to purchase Civic Smart Parking Meters. Chief O'Donohue?
Mayor, City Commission, the Royal Police Department is recommending the approval to purchase 150 new Civic Smart Parking Meters and the accompanying five-year warranty. As stated at the October 26th City Commission meeting, many of our current IPS meters will lose the ability to accept credit card payments on January 1st. Rather replace all 550 IPS meters, staff is recommending only replacing 150 while we continue to research improvements to our parking system. We are recommending the Smart, the Civic Smart meters, because they are less expensive than our current IPS meters, have a solar option for extended battery life and are more easily integrated into our current parking enforcement system. This purchase does exceed the amount included in the fiscal budget for this year. So if approved, the finance department will have to process an unofficial budget amendment. And there's a resolution for your approval.
Questions for the chief? And this comes out of the parking fund, right, chief?
Yes, sir.
Questions, any motions? Commissioner Douglas?
Approval of the resolution?
By Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Perush, discussion. Commissioner Macy?
I just want to thank the chief for getting that survey out there for the second round of Parking As We Consider It. I thought that was, excited to see that today. I think this is going to be a complicated fix and I'm glad to get some resident input on how to proceed from there.
Got to give Judy Davis credit for that survey because she developed the questions for us, so.
I rescind my gratitude towards Chief O'Donohue and I would like to reapply that gratitude to Judy Davis.
Okay, well, no discussion. I will call for the vote. We'll start up top now. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubat?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, this brings us to second to last agenda item, approval of amendment to the parking management agreement.
Yes, Mayor, City Commission, in 2012, the city issued a request, RFP for management of its parking structures. ParkRight was selected in a five-year, we entered into a five-year agreement. And it had options of two additional one-year extensions. Then in October of 2017, the City Commission authorized an additional three-year extension to that contract. ParkRight has done a very good job for the city and staff has no concerns with the service they provide. As stated earlier, the police department is currently researching options for improvements and potentially significant changes to the parking system. The City Commission has expressed a desire for staff to take a more holistic approach, to see if we can bring the entire parking operation under the same system. This could possibly include the parking structures. With that in mind, we approached ParkRight, they agreed to enter into a one-year extension to their current, under their current terms. While we continue to research our options and there's a resolution for your approval.
Questions for the chief? Commissioner Perush?
Approval of this resolution?
Motion by Commissioner Perush, seconded by Commissioner Colo, discussion. That good play to buy some time, good negotiation, Chief O'Donohue, to you and your staff. All right, we'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Dubat.
Yes.
Nicolo?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, this brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is the discussion of filling the vacancy for recently resigned former Commissioner Levaser. I know that, I don't, I don't know who's going to kick this off, but I think we're all relatively familiar with this since we just did this a little bit ago. So I think that, you know, we can probably leverage what we've done in the past, maybe a few tweaks from what we've learned. And, you know, kind of give some direction to staff on how they can support us. So Commissioner Perush, she had her hand up. Commissioner Perush?
I, I think the process that we used last time to replace the vacancy created by the passing of Commissioner Gibbs worked very, very effectively. We've got 40, 41 just superb applications from wonderful individuals from a broad range of people in the community. So I would strongly recommend that we proceed along the same lines. We've got two weeks before our next city commission meeting. I personally think that we can get this done before the end of the year, which I think is appropriate. But there also that we might want to tweak the application process a little bit. I've heard little bits and pieces of things that people have suggested that you might tweak it a little bit. But I think overall, I think using the application process again is, is the way to go.
Yeah, I, I think it worked well. I also think too, you know, how do we use the applications that we have already received? You know, so I think it's important that we invite new people to apply, but also check with the people that have already applied for the, the previous vacancy filled by Commissioner Colo. And, you know, then maybe the, we have a, you know, more robust list we can, we can work through. Commissioner Dubat?
Mayor, yeah, I, I don't know that it's necessary that, you know, we ask everyone who just applied two months ago to, to fill out a brand-new application and answer essentially what would be the same questions, maybe worded in slightly different ways. But I don't know if that's, if that's an appropriate way to go is to keep those on file and invite other people over another seven-week period to reapply or let folks who have already applied, apply again. Or do we really have to open up to a brand-new process and make everyone who just did it apply again? I mean, is there?
It's a good point. I don't know about tweaking. I mean, is there really anything major that we would tweak in the application process? I mean, for me, I think, I mean, here's my general, general rule. I mean, you, you, you know, what we're doing is we're essentially soliciting, one, interested participants. Two, we're learning a little bit about them that we want to know kind of out of the gate. So we don't have to ask those questions, you know, that are interesting, how long have you lived here? You know, why do you think, you know, what are your priorities, things of that nature? And then each of us, I mean, it's up to us, but we can reach out to those individuals and talk to them and see, you know, and if we have additional follow-up questions as individuals, we can, you know, tweak our own discussion because we can contact them. So I think to Commissioner Dubat's point, if we want to go through that lengthy process again, because I'm sure it's going to be probably the same 41 or so people, 40 now, that were interested before, plus a few other folks that probably want to apply as well. You know, is there anything we can't do as individuals if, if we narrow our list down to a few people, we want to reach out to them via email or telephone to call them? And, and, you know, that way we feel more comfortable and we make recommendations to the commission in the public setting as individuals. Meaning if you're going to add another little question, I, I don't know if there's like a material question that we missed the first time. And if we're going to tweak a small question here or there, isn't that something that we can independently follow up with individuals we're interested in? Commissioner Colo?
Um, I would, along with the majority, we'll do the that's left to me last time and you asked me to write another essay about why I want to be a commissioner. I would do that in a second. I think anyone who wants to be a commissioner will do whatever we ask them to, to show us their philosophies and ideas. Personally, I would suggest kind of like what Commissioner Perush was saying. I would ask, the same process, the same type of application. I might change the questions and ask everyone to fill out these new questions. I don't think it's fair to the people who have already applied to let new applicants come in. And, I mean, essentially all the answers are out there that would, you know, people's philosophies and ideas are out there already and how, what's there. I think something different, you can ask about budgeting, how, what would your budget priorities be next year? That's another way of asking, what are your priorities for the city, right? But it shows a little bit better understanding. And I, I think it's just, you know, well, yes, it will create work for previous applicants. Yes, we all have to read them. It's a pretty important seat. But I, I see, I see valid, you know, it can be valid both ways. So if there's any support for that, if not, I'm, I'm happy to go along.
Well, I don't think, I don't think any, nothing would stop. Well, I don't think, I don't think, uh, any, nothing would stop a previous candidate from, if they want to submit a new application. I think they're, you know, more than welcome to do that. I think that's an option, you know, if they. You know, now that everyone has seen the, the other applications, if they want to submit a new one, but I think if they want to keep their old one, I think that's fine too, you know? Commissioner Douglas?
So this, uh, Commissioner Colo's thought is that, uh, new applicants would be able to basically crib off previous people's applications, but the fact is, we didn't pick those people. So they, new applicants don't know what was right or wrong, or what we agreed or disagreed with in the previous application. So I think perhaps the risk of that is, is low. Um, I, I would be inclined to, I, I do think. We want to ask, well, we can do it one of two ways. See if previous applicants want to keep their hat in the ring. Um, and that could be done with a, a simple email, um, from the clerk's office. So I, I would suggest that, that we ask that of all of them. And then announce a new round of applications, same questions, same form, same process. Um, and that those, uh, responses would be due on, by December 16th? How does that sound? And if I see enough nods around the table, I might make that a motion, but. Others are raising their hands, so I'll.
Uh, we'll go with Commissioner Dubak and then Commissioner Macy. I think that's the order I saw.
Uh, I, I, I think that, that sounds totally appropriate. Give people an option to say, yes, I want to stay on file. Please keep my, my application in the mix. Um, I think Commissioner Colo's concern is he's worried everyone's going to plagiarize his brilliant multi, multi-page dissertation he wrote for us and. And maybe so, maybe, maybe that's a good strategy and we'll see who does it. Maybe it'll work, maybe it won't. Uh, but, uh, with this proposal or this concept, everyone would have the ability to. Revise theirs if they want and resubmit or just leave it on file for consideration. So I, I think that sounds appropriate.
Commissioner Macy?
Um, so I, I just want to say, I think, I think this sounds fine. I just want to check on the timing. So if it's the 16th. We're not planning to vote on it on the 21st, or if we are, I guess that's one thing I want to propose to change. So one thing that I found challenging about the last time. Is that when I'm reviewing these applications, you know, you know, I know a handful of them, but a bunch of them I don't, I don't know, and I don't have time to reach out to all of them. And like ask questions, find out more, make sure they're a real person and not just a bot applying to us. Um, so I, I mean, would there, could we make the application a little bit longer and then push this to our January meeting to look at it?
Commissioner Douglas?
I'm inclined to move pretty quickly. I don't know that the pool is going to change that dramatically. Um, and if, I, I assume that the, all of us, if we had candidates the last time around that we wanted to talk with, we'd talk with them. Um, so, but I, I mean, so I would say if, you know, in response to Commissioner Macy's request, I might move the deadline up to. Uh, pick, to pick a date, but I'm willing to, to consider this on the 23rd. Understanding that we may decide on the 23rd that we do not have any, the kind of unanimity that we had the last time around. We might say at that date that we want to push it back and have interviews at our next meeting. But, um, moving quickly on this gives us that window of opportunity if we need it.
Yeah, I think, I think the target should be the 21st. And if we need to buy more time or, or, you know, commissioners feel they need more time, then, then we'll take it. You know what I mean? We don't, it's. But I think if we push it out to January and then we decide that we need more time, then we're into February, March and. You know, we're working with six and I don't know if that's, I think we should try to, to target the 21st, but if we need time, take it. Uh, Commissioner Dubak?
Um, yeah, I think that's all spot on. Um, I would, uh, at the timeline, it worked pretty well for me last time to go through all of them and then, you know, connect with anyone who, you know. Was kind of percolating near the top of my list. Um, and I think it's important that, you know, the community knows this is an appointment for. 11 months, right? If, if we do this, uh, you know, before the end of this month. And we see someone in January, they're going to be with us for less than 11 months, really 10 months of service before the election date. Um, so I think having someone at the table, you know, representing the community and having a full table. Um, is important and the voters will have their say 10 months later. And to Commissioner Douglas's point of view, or point, if we. If we don't land on someone that we agree on, then yeah, we, we move it on into January, but, um. I put a lot of time into reading them last time and, um, there was definitely, uh, things that. That I was looking for and I think, you know, it'd be more proficient at it this time. So, uh, that, that sounds, that's something that'll work to me. If we need more time, we'll, you know, we'll give ourselves more time.
So does anyone want to take all these great ideas and put them in the form of a motion so we can talk about it? Commissioner Perush?
Okay, I'll give it a shot. Um. I move that we, um, reopen the application process for this city commission vacancy. Um, requesting applications to be submitted to city clerk's office by December. 16? Is that the date people are throwing around? What day of the week is that?
So Wednesday.
Okay.
Thanks.
The agenda gets put together and, and then by, by Thursday. So I think the 16th is like the last. Day that we pass the, this is a parenthetical phrase in the middle of this resolution, which is going to be part of it. But anyway, December 16th is the deadline. Um, then we consider all existing applications in that process and that the city clerk's office. Be directed to reach out to the current pool of applicants and to find out if they are interested in keeping their application in the pool. Um, and that we consider this, uh, vacancy in our next regular meeting, which is December 21st.
I think you captured it pretty good, Commissioner Perush. We have a motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas? All right. Uh, oh, one quick question for clarification. We said on the 16th, did we say 5:00 PM on the 16th?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. All right, so, um, discussion. Uh, Commissioner Colo?
Just so I'm clear, Commissioner Perush, uh, do all existing applicants have to contact the clerk to be, or considered, you know, to let. Uh, the clerk know they still would like to be considered?
No, my thought would be that the city clerk's office be directed to, she would be directed to affirmatively contact. Each one of the applicants that are currently still in the pool to find out whether or not they want to remain in. That it, the burden is on her to contact them.
Yes, but she will get a, we, we will perceive if we get a yes from that applicant. They will be considered applied if they say yes. If they don't reply, then it's, it's no.
I, yes, that's how I would try.
Right. A confirmation. You send out 40 emails, maybe a chaser and 20 of them come back and say yes, then their name remains in it. They don't, then if they don't reply with a yes or confirmation, then it, then it remains out. Um, and if anyone's really interested and they want to make sure and like they have a email address, whatever, they can call and confirm with the city clerk on their own as well.
Sure.
Um, Kyle or Commissioner Dubak?
I'm just wondering if we, uh, if it goes without saying, or do we need to give direction that we should probably issue a press release? First thing in the morning tomorrow to ensure all of our local papers have everything exactly right. I know there was a couple, there was a misprint. Uh, uh, for the last application. I think it's because we didn't, you know, put it in print, in print, everybody had seen, people are just gleaning from watching the meeting. And, you know, the, the conversation going back and forth and, and that's how, you know, there can be that kind of mistake. So can we issue a, a formal statement? Clarifying everything that we've decided here tonight in the form of press release?
Mr. Break?
Uh, if you notice that, um, the city clerk, Callis, she's been on the chat section here. She said that she's going to be emailing. And she can work with Judy Davis. So we'll, we'll get a press release out.
Great.
And for that matter, we can make a quick telephone call to the two reporters and make sure that, uh, the date is correct and date and time. So that, that won't be an issue.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Macy? Your, your microphone may have, it looks like you're unmuted.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Um, I was just noticing as, uh, Mr. Break was saying, Ms. Hallis' comments in the chat. Did you say a time? Uh, Commissioner Perush, you, okay.
5:00.
All right. Well, any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, okay, we got a process. Good luck, uh, Ms. Hallis. Appreciate your efforts. Um, and we look forward to seeing everybody's application again and going through them. They're always very interesting and enlightening and, and very humbling too. A lot of, you got amazing people in our community and reading these things, uh, you know, it's just, it's inspiring and. At least makes this mayor reflect upon his life and, uh, looking at everyone else's, uh, achievements and successes, so. Um, uh, I guess notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our beloved community, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion on this very important motion? All right, I don't see any discussion, so we'll, uh, call for the vote. Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, we're adjourned. Uh, special thanks to everyone tonight, uh, for tuning in and to my fellow commissioners. Thank you to all the staff. A lot of preparation goes into these meetings to help us make important decisions. And, uh, thanks, Richard. Thanks, Carol, for all your help, uh, making these, um, digital meetings, uh, run so smoothly. We're very grateful. Signing off, everyone have a great night and, uh, we'll see you next time. Take care.